I called a special meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform and streamed to YouTube. The meeting is audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of physical distancing and other restrictions. Thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. I am Paula Viescos, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, Ms. Pam Costa, and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website One more time, our district website page is www.sanjuan.edu/july16. Comments received by 5:00 PM today have already been shared with the board, with all board members. Comments received after 5:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time public comment has concluded for that item. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand feature. And there's a visual provided. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. With that, there is one business item on the agenda tonight, which is Item B1, Providing a Continuum of Safe Instructional Choices to Support Student Learning. After Superintendent Kern gives a presentation, then we will hear public comment, followed by board discussion and possible action. Superintendent Kern.
Thank you, President Viescos. And we have a special guest, Dr. Casiri, who I'm going to turn this over to in just a minute. I'm going to make some initial comments and then cover the first slide. And then we will have her speak and we'll take an opportunity for the board to ask her questions then because she is double booked tonight between us and Stack City, as well as they have a meeting starting at 6:00. First, I'd like to take an opportunity to just thank everybody who has joined us. We have over a thousand, or a thousand participants on this Zoom call, and I'm sure we have folks watching on the YouTube channel as well. That's outstanding. We have had many, many folks email the board the last couple of days and weeks. As Trent mentioned, those have been provided to the board. And I know the board has also been following along with other comments as well. I spent a good deal of time following comments on social media, as well as reading the comments that were shared with the board. I kind of want to just take a minute before I address one part to the community and share a little bit just about the board and staff. I came to San Juan Unified on January 1, 1974, in the middle of my kindergarten year. Spent all my K-12 years in San Juan Unified, went off to college. And while I was at college, I was still working in the district as an intermural instructor, a basketball coach, and then came back and I've been here for the past 25 years, more than 25 years. So 47 years of my life have been involved in the San Juan community. We have board members who have graduated from schools in San Juan Unified, who had all of their students go to students, or schools in San Juan Unified, who currently have students in San Juan Unified and who spent their careers working in San Juan Unified. Why do I say this? I say it because I want the community to know that the district leadership, that the district board is committed to our students. We are not here without a deep investment personally in our students and in our community. As I've read comments from folks, I want to acknowledge that the distance learning that we provided this spring was not adequate for many of our students. I hope you're patient and you really listened to the presentation tonight because I hope that you see we have been working very hard and thoughtful about the plan that we have put in place. Two weeks ago, if you would have asked me, we would have been coming to the board tonight with an option to start the year in a hybrid manner and options for other students who may feel they need to start the year in a different way. But there have been significant health changes in the conditions with spikes taking place, and we have to acknowledge that. And the health and safety of both our students and our staff is important. So as we go through this presentation, I want you to really listen to where we hopefully have heard the concerns, and we're going to try and address those and, and hold us accountable even as we go forward into the fall to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students as best we can. So Trent, if you would put up the PowerPoint at this time. And go to that second slide. You heard that we're going to be talking about a continuum of safe instructional choices for students. This first slide just really talks about the checklist for physically reopening campuses. And you will see some of those bullets there. We actually have some control over some of those. We currently do not. And so with that in mind, we did ask Dr. Casiri to join us this evening. And so I'm going to invite her at this time to share with us really what are the current health conditions in Sacramento County and the things that we should be watching for as we start this school year.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern, and good evening, everyone. And thank you for this invitation to share with you. I know that these are very difficult decisions that have to be made, and they're not made lightly. We've spent hours agonizing over the data and the decisions that have to be made and spent a lot of time talking with the superintendent of schools to come up with a plan. And when we actually put out the joint plan at the beginning of June, the picture was very different. And as Superintendent Kern has mentioned, we were very hopeful that at least we would be able to recommend that the schools could start with a flexible schedule and probably a hybrid schedule for most of the schools. But things progressed very quickly. And just to give you an idea of just how much things have changed, at the beginning of June, we were getting maybe 10 to maybe 30 cases a day being reported to public health. We're getting over 250 cases reported every single day. Over the last three weeks, we have had over a thousand cases reported per week for the last three weeks. The total as of this morning since this pandemic started for Sacramento County is 6,395. And so you can imagine almost about 50% of those have been within the last month and especially within the last three weeks. So there's been a dramatic change and a lot of concern for us and for the schools as well. In addition to that, our count of deaths right now is 94. There was a time when the majority, over 90% of the deaths were among people over the age of 65. And also the majority of our cases at the beginning of this epidemic were in people over the age of 65. So when we started out, that was our major concern, and we worked really hard to control it. But as we started reopening, we've seen a shift in that now the demographic that is most impacted are those aged 18 to 49. This is the working group. These are our parents. These are our teachers. So definitely, there's been a change and definitely a reason for us to be concerned. Our hospitalizations have also gone up. At one time, we had only five people in the hospital when we got our lowest numbers before the reopening. Our hospital case count right now is at 184, and we have 58 people in the intensive care unit. And although the hospitals are still able to manage, they are actually looking at their surge plan. And we've been asked by the state to actually look at how we are going to activate that. So definitely, you know, there, again, there is reason for us to be concerned. Lastly, for the longest time, the age group 0 to 17, we had very few cases. And for the longest time, it was less than 100. Right now it's 546. And I know a lot of times people have said that, well, children tend to not be impacted or they get mild disease. And that might be true, but we, there's a lot that we don't know about this pandemic, about this disease. And it's, we are seeing it change. As I mentioned, there was a time when it was mainly the people over the age of 65 that were being impacted, but that has changed. Also, among those in the hospital and the deaths, most of the ones that we had were either older or people with chronic conditions. But now we're beginning to see deaths among people with no underlying conditions. So with the amount of disease in the community, the state has been working with us to see how we can turn it around again. And you probably heard about what they call a monitoring list. And that list of counties has also been growing. At one time, it was less than 15. Right now, it's over 30. So this is not just something that's impacting Sacramento County. It's impacting a lot of the counties surrounding us and other counties within California. So there are many that are grappling with decisions about is it safe enough for us to be able to have our children in school? And to remember also that it's not just the children that we're concerned about, but many of our staff, many of the teachers are actually in these age groups that we are concerned about. And many of them may have chronic conditions that put them at risk. We also have children that have chronic conditions that impact their immune system. And so with all of that, we've been having discussions with the superintendents. And I believe that you probably all have seen the statement that was put out not too long ago from the superintendent, again with support from myself and Dr. Billenson from the public health aspect. So I'm going to stop there. I'm sure that you have a lot of questions, but I just wanted to give you a picture of what we are seeing with the numbers.
Dr. Casiri, thank you so much, and I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Viescos.
Thank you very much, Dr. Casiri. Thank you for joining us and for the critical role that you've played over the last few months in keeping our community healthy. If it works for my colleagues, as Superintendent Kern mentioned, we know you're double booked. So I'm going to ask that my colleagues, we're going to go through orders we have, as we typically have done, and I'm going to ask folks to limit it to two questions, no more than two questions apiece. And if that works for, for everybody, we will begin with Mr. Hernandez.
And I just want to mention, I actually do have up to 6:30. I asked them to extend, so yes.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate that, and I think we will take you up on that for sure. We'll still start with the two questions, and if we've got time, we'll circle back for another round.
Thank you, Ms. Viescos. Thank you, Dr. Casiri, for being here with us tonight. I just want to, I just want to make a comment, I guess, and, and I'm sure that you've heard that there's a lot of mixed messages out there. I'm sure you're aware, if not read, the California Academy of Pediatrics guidelines and their suggestion that our kids should be back in school. So you can see the frustration, frustration that many of our parents are feeling. And, and then besides that, we have schools that are opening in other parts of the world, even in our other states and even in our state. So you can see that there's definitely mixed messages out there. And my, I guess my question to you is, those, those schools that are heading back, even within our state and other states, what have we learned? What, why them and not us?
Thank you for that question. And yes, I, I agree with the statement that the American Academy of Pediatrics put out. I think that school is very important, but we want to do it safely. We want to make sure that when we open the schools that we're not going to be back in the situation where we close again. And as I mentioned, when we put out the guidance in June, we believed at that time that it, the situation was such that it was stable enough to be able to provide a safer environment for both our schools and for both of the children and the staff. But since then, again, because of the statistics that I have mentioned, there is reason for pause, reason for concern. I want to mention also that when we said that maybe the schools should open as virtual learning, it doesn't mean that that's the way it's going to stay for the rest of the semester. What the state has asked us to do, and I believe that they are coming out with a guidance. We were actually expecting it today, but it might come out tomorrow. But at any time it is coming out soon, where especially for the counties that are on the monitoring list, they are going to ask us to consider that delaying their opening of schools in person until we are able to bring down the numbers and be off of that monitoring list. So there's a number of indicators that they look at. And if you pass a certain threshold for any of those indicators, you will be put on that list. And Sacramento County is on that list. Initially, we were on because of the percentage increase in hospitalizations. But now we're on the list because of the intensive care unit capacity. We should have at least 20% intensive care unit beds available. And right now, it is less than 20%. The last I checked, it was at 16. And also, our case count, we are at 139,000 within Sacramento County. And the advice that they have given us is that we should be below 100,000, below 100,000. And the reason for all of that is the more the disease is circulating in the community, when you have environments where you have a large group of people congregating together, there is an increased risk, especially when it's indoors. And if you remember that recently, again, the counties that are on the monitoring list were asked to close some businesses where, indoors, where there's a propensity for people to gather, again, for those reasons, because there is an increased risk. And yes, we know that children, as at least the information that we have right now, they tend to have mild disease. But there are many factors that could change that. One is if we have a large group of children together. If you recall, when this whole thing started, actually, the schools were one of the first sector that closed. And the reason for that was because we were very concerned. We didn't know what was going to happen, and we wanted to keep our children safe. I know the, the value of the in-person learning. And so again, just to say, we do not make these recommendations lightly. It is because of what we are seeing, and we want to make sure that when the schools start, that we have a good system in place. So what you're finding is that there is some variation from county to county. When you look at the larger counties, the more urban counties, LA and San Diego, they have actually already taken the, made that decision that they are going to have virtual learning for the entire semester. But what we have decided in Sacramento is that we want to have the opportunity to work on our numbers and get them down so that at least we can get to a point where we are able to reconsider the plan that we had put together. As I mentioned, the state is going to put out some guidance, and that will provide us some more information on when we can be able to reopen. And I know one of the factors will be that will be off the, the monitoring list for at least a period of time because that will mean that we have better control of the disease in the community.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I will yield my second question, Ms. Viescos.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We will then move to Ms. Costa.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Casiri, thank you so much for being here and for bringing your expertise. I'm an educator. I'm not a doctor. And so I had so many questions, and I feel really grateful that you're here to answer them. My first question, and I've asked it everywhere, is when the governor is saying that we shouldn't have indoor dining and movie theaters and people in movie theaters and bowling alleys and hair salons and barber shops, and all of those activities are probably less than two hours, what in any way would make it seem reasonable to have people in an enclosed space for more than six hours a day? And what is the factor in the enclosed space that makes it more dangerous?
So that what we, we know about this virus is that it's easily spread through the air, respiratory, when somebody who has the disease is either singing, talking, laughing, coughing, sneezing. That releases the virus into the air, and so people around can easily breathe, breathe the virus in. And we know that it's dependent on the length of time of exposure. And we also know that indoors, because of the, the ventilation, there is a higher risk because of course the air stays static for at least a period of time. We know that for outdoors, the risk is less. We also know that using a face covering and maintaining the six feet of separation does provide some protection as well. So when we put together the guidance that we released in June together with the superintendents, that was the idea that we were looking at is the six feet of separation, face covering, sanitation, and also monitoring, making sure that people with symptoms didn't come to school. But that is all dependent on the, the amount of disease in the community. Because if you have a lot of people who are coming down with the disease, the likelihood that you have somebody, somebody who either has very mild symptoms or is not exhibiting any symptoms is much higher. And so it's basically looking at what you have and considering whether it's safe enough on environment. So our thought, our consideration is that if we can go back to the numbers that we had at the time that we had the, we put out our guidance, that that will be safe enough for us to be able to allow the, the schools to have, at least partially have in person. And of course, we'd be continuing to monitor to make sure that we know what is going on and work very closely with the schools. If there is a report, that we can easily jump on that and make sure that we isolate people and prevent the spread. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you. My second question, and this is an unfair question without giving you advance notice, so I will take ballpark figures. Have we tested as many five-year-old to 17-year-olds as we have the adult population? And if so, would that account for why there is the belief that there is less of the COVID virus in young children?
I can't give you a specific number, but I know that we have not been testing children a lot. When you look at the community sites that we're providing, most of them are taking in adults. But there are some places where the pediatric population can be tested. And most of the time when we test them, it's either because they are in a home where we have other cases or they're exhibiting symptoms themselves. So there's still a lot that we have to learn about this disease. And basically, what we are seeing right now is, is the, you know, the picture that we have to go by. One of the other things that I wanted to mention also that is of concern is that, especially from what we heard from New York, because initially we were told, well, children have only mild disease. But now we know that in rare instances, a child can have, you know, a very severe reaction where the immune, the immune system just, you know, goes out of control and starts attacking the body, and it can lead to multi-organ failure. And so even though it is rare, we don't know who is at risk and when that will happen. And I think that does give us reason to pause is that we want to make sure that we minimize the risk as much as possible before putting our children in this state.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thank you, President Viescos. Thank you so much for being here, Dr. Casiri. I've been wanting to meet you a really long time, and I'm sorry that it's under these circumstances, but I'm fangirling on you just so you now know. And just thank you for your time. I know you have a lot going on right now. So my question is, could you talk a little bit about the severity and longevity of the symptoms themselves beyond death? Because I'm hearing from folks that I know that have been diagnosed, you know, a month and a half later, when they are no longer testing positive, are receiving oxygen, you know, with almost respiratory failure admitted to the hospital. I have another friend that, you know, again, was positive, no longer testing positive for quite some time. Well, that's relative, right? About a month and a half, who's now getting hives underneath their skin that can't be treated because it's not topical. So I'm just wondering, you know, can you talk a little bit beyond the death of the severity and longevity of symptoms?
So we're still learning about what happens after, and a lot of people have asked us for the numbers of how many people have recovered. But we at this time are not able to give any specifics about what happens to people after they recover. I know that I've heard of cases where individuals, even after they recover, have very severe disabilities. I've heard of cases where people have lost the ability to walk or they are dependent on oxygen. So, and then there are others who have said that after they've, so quote unquote, recovered, they still feel a lot of fatigue. So there's a lot that we don't know. We're also hearing from some of the researchers that there is some unknown damage that occurs to the lungs that may affect a person after that. And so even for those that do seem to have apparent mild disease, we don't know how much damage is occurring to the lungs. So we're all learning about this disease as we go along, and that's part of the reason for the caution that we're taking and the nervousness with being able to put people in these situations. We, as I mentioned, we had actually bent the curve, and we were getting close to just 10 cases a day, and we were feeling really good. But what we found is that when people gather, there's an increased risk. And so as people started going for parties and especially graduations, birthdays, I heard some really heart-wrenching stories. For example, about a, a, someone who took his mother out for Mother's Day and had a party. someone who took his mother out for Mother's Day and, um, had a party. And he had what he thought were allergies and didn't realize that he was actually passing on COVID nineteen to his mother. Unfortunately, his mother did not survive and, uh, so he's having to live with that. Um, and he suffered a lot as well. So it's, it's very variable what can happen and there's still a lot that we don't know. That we're still learning.
Thanks for that. And one more point, I want to make sure that I understand correctly. I also read the Academy of Pediatrics statement. But there was a line in there, and I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, that really clearly said, when it's safe. Like those words were said, you know, they could go when it's safe. And so can you confirm that I read and understand that correctly and that we are in that spot yet? Safety, um, we just can't do it the way it needs to be done.
Absolutely. Um, and I think what we are all struggling to determine is when is it safe enough for our children to be in school? And the indicators that we have is the, the best, uh, way for us to be able to judge that and to look at what's happening in the community because that will tell us what's going to happen. I'll also, uh, give you an example is with many of the, um, the businesses that have opened. Now, because we are seeing more COVID nineteen in the community, we are getting reports of people who are exposed elsewhere. But then they come to work and now they have an exposure at work. So that's where our, our concern is. And, um, I, I think the state is the, the, um, guidance that they're going to put out will help us a lot in making those decisions. Again, uh, personally, I feel that if we can get back to that state where we were at the beginning of June, we were comfortable at that time that we had things under control. And we can, uh, we are working with the schools to determine what, uh, additional measures we need to take. And being able to provide, uh, testing more readily. And in fact, that's part of the concern that came up. Because you've probably heard that people are waiting anywhere from seven to ten days for results. And so if you have to make decisions and you're having to wait seven to ten days, it has a huge impact. And so, um, if you're looking at an entire school, you could very easily find that half of your teachers are out either because of an exposure or because they are in isolation. And then how are you going to be able to run the school? Um, you have to be able to get results quickly and, uh, it has to be readily available. So we're working on that as well and we're hoping that, uh, within the next few weeks, we'll be at a point where, um, we can get much faster turnaround times and, um, be, have it available for our students and our teachers.
Thank you so much, doctor.
Dr. McKibben.
First of all, thank you, uh, Dr. Casiri for being with us and, and, and sharing with us some information that, that is critically important to how, how we run our schools and so forth. One of the questions that I have, uh, is, uh, that in the, uh, uh, early days, uh, that tracing or tracking was one of the things that was constantly talked about. I haven't heard much about that kind of, uh, thing in Sacramento County. Do we have a cadre of people who do the tracing and tracking? Uh, is that part of the, uh, the County Office of Health and so forth that we do?
Absolutely. And, and thank you for bringing that up. And we, we are actually constantly growing that team. When, uh, we started the reopening, we actually had a team of thirty that were trained. And they were sufficient for the numbers we were getting at that time. But of course, with the increase, we've had to quickly ramp up. And so we, every single week, we have additional people that are being trained to be able to, uh, help us with contact tracing. And the importance of contact tracing is to quickly identify, say, if we find someone who is positive, that we can quickly identify who the contacts were and got, get those quarantined and tested as well. Because that's one way for us to be able to stop the spread. But if we don't have enough contact traces or if the, there's a delay in getting results, then that, uh, process is, uh, not as, as effective. So we're working on being able to ramp up, uh, the contact tracers. And one of the things that we're discussing with the school nurses actually is that they will be able to assist us with, uh, being able to, to do the contact tracing really quickly. So our plan is to give them additional training and also give them some access to, um, some of our databases. So that, uh, we can work more closely with them because they're on the ground, they know the students. And they can quickly, um, get that information to us and help us in identifying who needs to be in quarantine. And oftentimes, actually, we're very dependent on the nurses for letting us know when there's a student that's not doing well, who, that's not feeling well. So I, I think that, um, if this is a, a very important part of, uh, being able to be ready to, um, keep our school safe.
Well, you answered the second part of my question related to what can schools do related to the contact tracing. So thank you very much.
And one thing also is that we are working on a draft of a, uh, a document that we will share, um, as, as after we've gotten approval. But we're also waiting just to see the guidance that will come out from the state so that we can put out additional information because we've been asked about the different scenarios. What should the schools do if a student falls sick? What should the schools do if they get a report of someone who is test positive? Or if someone has been exposed? So we'll include that information. And definitely as more questions come up, we'll be able to build on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri. And, um, I will say this has been a, a very long event, but one the most informative pieces has been able, being able to learn from you and your colleagues both in this capacity and in wearing my other hat during my, my day job. And thank you again for everything, everything that you've done. Um, as was mentioned at the top of this meeting, you know, um, thanks to the, your leadership and the leadership of, of the county, all thirteen school districts at this point will start the year in distance learning, but we are here to discuss and consider really a spectrum of, of learning. Um, we're hopeful that this, the condition of our county won't remain for the entirety of the year. Um, and so that will be part of the discussions this evening. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to, um, in, in your professional evaluation, you know, what are the most relevant metrics when determining whether or not it's appropriate to, to switch modes of instruction? And are there any epidemiological factors that lend themselves to, to prioritizing a certain cohort of kids? And, and what are your thoughts on those items?
So I may not have all of the answers because, um, we are still learning more about this disease. I think a good starting point will be the, uh, the factors or the indicators that we have, uh, that the state has set up for the monitoring list. And because what they've told us is that once we are able to control the disease in the community to the point that we're off that list, that means we are heading in the right direction. We also, on a daily basis, look at the numbers and look at, uh, the direction that, um, these numbers are going in. There are some early indications that maybe it's peaked and that it's going down again. Um, and then we're also very hopeful that with the recent closures and with the information we've been putting out about avoiding gatherings, about the social distancing and the face covering, that we will be able to bring down the numbers again. I expect that we will have, uh, frequent discussions about what the, the thought is in terms of, is it safe enough? And there might be some time where we might say, you know what, we really want to try and see, you know, we think that it's safe enough to start, but we have to be flexible enough to know that if we start seeing cases either among the, um, teachers or among the students, that we will have to revisit our plan. So it is fluid. Uh, we've asked people to be very flexible. And of course, you know, our hope, and as I mentioned, from the, some of the early signs we're seeing is that we are now heading in the right direction, that we can revisit this again, uh, within a month. And maybe at that point, uh, because it takes about two weeks to see a change when, uh, you make some, uh, changes such as, uh, closing businesses. So I'm thinking that within a month or so, we should be able to revisit this. And maybe at that point, make a decision to move forward.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. And, um, my final question is, it seems to be, um, seems to be a growing consensus that one of the things we've learned the most throughout the duration of this event is the role that face coverings and, and masks play. And it continues to grow into, certainly a point of contention. Um, but I'm wondering if you can speak from a health perspective about what we've learned on the, uh, the role that they play for both children and adults.
And there've been a lot of discussions, especially for children, uh, for the younger ones, because there's some concern about whether children would be able to use the face coverings for a prolonged period of time. So that has been discussed at the state level and so they will provide some guidance, uh, on that. I definitely expect that for, uh, cho- older children, especially those in high school and for the adults, that, uh, the face coverings will be a requirement. And, um, then in certain situations also, especially like, uh, getting on the school bus, that, uh, they will be required at that point. Uh, but there are situations where it, it might be difficult to use a face covering and therefore, they, there might be face shields that are used. But I think it's those, uh, face coverings, social distancing and hand sanitizing are, I think, the three preventive measures that will be most important for us to be able to get in place so that we can make the environment as safe as possible. And that, of course, along with, uh, keeping people's home that are having symptoms.
Thank you very much. Are there any burning last questions from my colleagues or can we give Dr. Casiri fifteen minutes to prep for her next meeting? Okay, Seaton, thank you very much again for joining us.
Thank you. And if there are any other questions that come up afterwards, uh, you have my email. Um, I want to make sure that I'm available to you because I know that, um, you have some very, um, important decisions to make. And I know none of us is taking this lightly. And, um, I want to remind parents that this is not a static situation. It will change. That even though we have made the decision to start the school year in a virtual mode, that it is our expectation, it is our hope as we work together, that we'll be able to bring this under control and be able to bring the children back to in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Casiri, thank you for being so generous of your time as well. We really appreciate that. I think that has benefited all of us as, as staff in the community as well. And so thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, Trent, if you would put up the next slide. So, uh, much of what Dr. Casiri talked about is, as we look at our strategic priorities for reopening schools, have to do on that health and safety factor. But these are the pieces that we were looking at, board members. We previously shared this slide with you already. And I think as we go through this presentation, you're going to hear these, um, areas embedded throughout it. And, and one of the things that I, I feel really positive about is we have been working all summer on this continuum. And I think Dr. Casiri spoke to the fact that we're at a starting point, but we have done some amazing work in partnership with our unions to develop a plan that I think we will be able to implement. And so I'm going to kick this over right now to Trent. He's going to start off with the safety and illness protocols. And then we'll get into more of that instructional piece later on. So Trent, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern. Uh, members of the board, uh, what we have in safety and illness protocols, you've seen some of and su- and Assistant Superintendent, uh, Kamara's presentation at the end of June. So some of this will be a little bit of review. Some of this will be new information as we've continued to evolve those conversations. But as we look at what that continuum will look like in returning to school campuses, really that base is making sure that we can have a safe environment to return to on school campuses and getting to and from school campuses, as well as the operations we have that need to support our schools. So, uh, we took a look at how we can do that and do that well. Uh, before I really dig into some of these pieces, I do want to give a shout out to Assistant Superintendent Kamara, as well as his facilities team, our risk management team, our safe schools team and our nutrition team. They've done a lot of heavy lifting on this portion of the work. So they've done a lot of research. They've done a lot of digging into the state guidance, the local guidance, the federal guidance, the specific program guidance from, uh, the school's insurance authority, from other, uh, experts in the field to really make sure that we are in alignment with the best guidance that is out there, as well as fitting that guidance to our system in a way that will work for us and being able to implement this continuum of instructional models for all of our, all of our students as we come back to school. So they've done a really good job. And we're going to give a high-level overview of some of these pieces today. There's a lot of detail behind this stuff. But we wanted to touch on some of the high-level pieces that we know people are talking about and that people have an interest in. So I do want to just highlight that all of that detail is going into the plans that we have in place, both our crisis planning as well as our injury and illness prevention program. Um, and then one of the great pieces that the team has really been working on is this idea of creating manuals for our school site leaders and our school site staff so that the actual pieces that they need to respond to their daily duties in keeping students and staff and community safe are right there at their fingertips as we move forward. So that will be one of the pieces that come out of this as we finalize this, based on the input we collect from the board tonight, as well as continued community input and staff input. Once those pieces are finalized, that will be one of those outcomes of this work is to provide those materials for our staff to be able to use as a reference. So this is a common theme. We've, we've been talking about it for quite a while, um, clear back into March and before. If you are ill, please stay at home. And this really has a couple of different themes to it for us. Really, one of the pieces that we've talked a lot about is making sure that our staff can recognize the symptoms of COVID nineteen. Because as we go back to campus, when we hit that point in the continuum, we want to make sure that we can assist students and staff members who are not feeling well to, uh, take the appropriate actions, to be removed from campus, to stay home if they're ill. So that will be one of the pieces. Um, and as we invite people back to campus, we are going to ask them to screen themselves. And there's a big conversation between active screening or passive screening. Uh, an active screen would be taking, uh, temperatures of students as they arrive on campus, taking temperatures of staff as they arrive on campus. A passive screening is asking folks to do those pieces at home, report those pieces before they leave. We are looking at doing a passive screening model, uh, that is advantageous in that it really catches symptoms hopefully before people get into buses, get into the line at the start of school. Catches it when it really needs to be caught before it gets to campus. So part of that will actually be training students, staff, family members, as well as staff to, to really look for those symptoms and how to do those screenings and do them well and make sure that they're reporting those symptoms if they do have issues. And that's the next bullet that's on the screen. There is really that attendance monitoring for COVID nineteen symptoms. This is something we've done for flu seasons in the past. This is something we implemented in the spring. And it's really about asking our families as they are reporting those illnesses for students, if any of the symptoms that are being experienced due to illness are related to COVID nineteen or COVID nineteen-like. That does a couple of different themes for us. One, it gives us some information that we can share with county public health if they're asking for it. Uh, but it also gives us a leading indicator that if we are starting to see students, uh, multiple students at a school in a classroom or a certain school community have symptoms, we get to see that information really start coming through a little bit earlier than if we waited for students just to, um, kind of start coming out and then coming back to us with COVID nineteen test results. So that's an important piece for us as well. Another piece of this, of course, is we need to make sure that we're doing what we can so that students and staff can stay Another piece of this, of course, is we need to make sure that we're doing what we can so that students and staff can stay at home if they're ill. A big piece of that, of course, for our students is making sure that we can support them through multiple instructional models. So in being able to move between whether we're in in-person learning model to a distance learning model or a homeschool or independent study. And back and forth so that if student is ill, needs to be out for an extended period of time. Whether that's to recover or simply to be in isolation because perhaps they've been exposed. We want to make sure that we have a path for students and families to be able to access that. And then similarly for our staff members, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity. To access as much leave as they can if they do need to access that. And you can see on the screen that there's some options there that may be included for staff. Much of this is independent upon specific situations and the role of the staff member, the bargaining unit that the staff member is in. But that first bullet is actually a new piece of leave that's available for staff and it's up to 80 hours depending on the position. Of COVID-19 related leave of full pay, and that's part of new legal language that has been put in specifically in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. So that's a piece that is above and beyond what has previously been available to folks. And then, of course, they still have access to all the sick leave and other pieces of leave that they've been able to access in the system before as well. So of course, our first line of defense is trying to keep illness off of campus, but if it does make its way to campus. One of the things our schools will be asked to do is really establish three areas on their campuses. And we recognize this will be a challenge for some of our school sites that are space challenged. Not all of our school sites were built with extra spaces laying around for them. But this would be a priority and all schools would be required to identify these three spaces. And really the key one on this list is that symptom and isolation area. And the idea here is simply that if there is a staff member who cannot leave campus immediately, who's exhibiting symptoms. Or does find out that they've had a positive test result. Or a student who is in a similar situation that we have somewhere for them to be able to go and isolate away from the rest of the school community. Until they can be picked up by a parent or relative so that they can be safely transported off of campus. One of the big questions we've been getting, of course, is what is the protocol that we're going to use? If we do have either a positive diagnosis, a positive test of a student or staff member. Or if we have a possible exposure of a student or staff member. The big key points to both response protocols. Are that we want to be consistent and that requires that we make sure that we've done some training. So again, that goes back to making sure that we've done training with our staff members. And then making sure that we have consistent processes in place for them to access. And really the strategy here is to make sure that students or staff who are either confirmed or have been possibly exposed. Are be, are able to remove themselves from that school environment. That we have a central place for those notifications to go so that we are tracking those effectively and we know what's going on all the time. And then that we have a way to inform those who may be, may have been impacted. So certainly if there's a positive confirmation, that information can be shared with those individuals who may have been exposed. And similar, if there has been a possible exposure, that information can be shared with those who may have been exposed. I do want to point out that we can only share the information we have available. And we can only share the information that's allowed under the privacy rights acts and laws that we have to operate under. So certainly we have to be aware of the issue, which means an employee or a student or a family. Has to share that information with us, or we have to be notified by county health or another medical provider. And then we have to make sure that we're respecting those privacy rights in the way that we share information. So we're very conscious of that. We're very careful about that. The next pieces of that, of course, then after we've done that notification piece, making sure that other folks can make sure they're taking care of themselves. Is really about the response and that's about cleaning isolation, whether that's simply cleaning the room, if it's a possible exposure, making sure that. There's nothing in the room that could possibly be an area for infection. Or if it's in terms of a positive diagnosis, making sure that. Individuals who might have been exposed are indeed able to stay away from campus for the appropriate amounts of time. And that we are keeping folks away from campus for the appropriate amounts of time. So one of the big questions, and this is where we get to be a little bit different than some of the information we've shared previously, is what might campuses look like when we are able to return? Whether it be under a modified model of in-person instruction. Or even to some degree back to our standard five-day model of instruction. And part of that will be social distancing pieces on campus. That's really about limiting the number of guests and other folks who might be on campus. So. Making sure that we don't have too many people inside of school offices. Similar measures that you're seeing in commercial environments right now. One-way signage on the floor to direct traffic. Those barriers to make sure that we have some protection for those who are interacting with public on a regular basis. And again, about reducing the numbers of folks and interactions to make sure there's adequate protection for them there. Big question, of course, then has come to what about social distancing inside the classroom? What might that look like? As we worked through this continuum of models and what it might look like, certainly in a five-day model where we have everybody on campus. The classroom is going to look much more like it has traditionally. In that modified on-campus format, we would actually have fewer students on campus at any given time. And that's where we would have fewer desks in the room. So we would actually be able to space desks about six feet apart. Giving that space that's called for in all of the requirements. And then, of course, facing those in the same direction to help with airflow pieces as well. Portable screen guards for the use of intervention and support work. So if there's a staff member who's working at a table with a student. On speech issues or other pieces, they have some level of protection there in addition to the face guard and face shields. And one of the big pieces we've been talking about is encouraging the use of outdoor spaces. Many of our campuses, especially as we've been through to modernize those campuses. Have been able to in, improve their outdoor spaces and add some places where people can go outside, do some lessons outside. So using those outdoor spaces to their greatest extent will be part of our strategy as well. And then, of course, making sure that we're not sharing items to the extent that we possibly can at any given time. Lunchtime is another big question. How would we handle that? As we've looked at going back and knowing that we might need to have stricter protocols sometimes than others, depending on the community. Health need, we've really looked at kind of two models at elementary and middle schools. One is the consistent group of students going into the MP room and staying in the MP room for their meals. So students would go in their class sets to the MP room, they would get their meal. They would actually stay in the MP room, but rather than being at tables as they've previously been. We would actually have desks or the ability to have desks in there spaced out again, six feet apart. So that students could stay in that MP room spaced out. In cases where we need to be a little more restrictive, make sure that we were keeping smaller cohort groups together. The idea would be to take class sets to the MP room, they would get their food and they would actually leave straight out of the MP room to a designated area to eat their meal, whether that be a classroom. Or another designated space on campus for that class where they'd be supervised by classified staff or administrative staff. So they could have their meal in that smaller group and stay together in that small group. For our high school students, we have lots of outdoor spaces. Keeping students inside high school is a little bit difficult for lunch as well. So we recognize that making sure that they are indeed enjoying their lunches and staying socially distanced. Will be a supervision issue. So noting that that will be a challenge. The plan there would be to allow them to get their food, stay on campus and increase supervision so we can help maintain that social distance of six feet for our high school students. Now, if we're back on campus for five days a week, of course, students would be on campus, we would feed them there. If it's a hybrid model where we have some students on campus and some students engaging in remote learning on any given day. That's where our curbside meal service would come in. And the plan there would be for at all of our high schools, students be able to go to any high school and pick up a meal if they're not on campus that day for learning. As well as strategic elementary sites, 10 to 15 sites throughout the district where they could also go and pick up meals for that day if they're not on campus for learning. And the other piece that's important for the meal program is making sure that we're engaging in options that really reduce the chance of transmitting anything through the program. So the use of prepackaged food items, making sure that we have the sneeze guards on the cashier stations. And limiting cash transactions so that we're not passing things back and forth. Couple of other items that I know are of interest to folks and that have been talked about, really limiting locker usage. That's a, creates a touch point that's hard to clean on a daily basis. So the idea here would be to really limit the usage of lockers to the greatest extent possible. And if lockers were permitted to be used, it would require a cleaning plan to be in place. Recesses really need to be in smaller cohort groups if we're in a very restrictive mode, which is kind of where we would initially start when we're on campuses. And part of going back into that resource recess mode. Is really making sure we have a solid plan for cleaning equipment, both the playground equipment. As well as any equipment that might possibly be shared, if shared equipment was even allowed at that point. Larger group pieces, of course, need to be a consideration. That if we cannot do social distancing, that's an absolute thing we can't do right now. But we need to be thoughtful about those and we don't want to necessarily say absolutely not right away. But again, it depends on the stage we're in and it needs to be with some thought into how it's set up and how it's planned. And it would also require some significant cleaning. So that would be a difficult piece for us to implement. But it's a piece that we've taken a look at and have some plans around. And then, of course, our transportation system, making sure that our buses are loaded rear to front so we don't have unloaded from front to rear. So that we don't have students passing each other and reducing seating capacities on those where we can to limit student capacity on those. Hygiene, again, this is a common area where we've talked a lot in the past about making sure that students have. And staff have ample opportunity to engage in good hygiene, which is really about washing their hands frequently, not touching our faces. One of the big pieces we want to drive home for folks is that certainly those classrooms with sinks will have the soap and paper towels in them. But every classroom will have a hand sanitizer dispenser installed. And teachers will also have an additional bottle of hand sanitizer in the room at all times. And one of the requests we've really had from folks is if I have a desk and I want to just make sure it's extra clean, how do I do that? It's not really practical for us to send a custodian into every classroom between every class. So we want to make sure that students or staff who want to wipe something down have the ability to do that. So making sure that we have materials there for them to do that if they wish to. Couple of notes on our facilities and cleaning. As Dr. Cassiri mentioned, really airflow is one of the important pieces we're taking a look at. Encouraging our classes to open the doors, open the windows, create airflow when we can. Making sure that we've upgraded the filter units on all of our HVACs as well as sanitizing those over the summer. That's something that Assistant Superintendent Kamara shared with you last time when he presented. And then again, that frequent, frequent cleaning of touchpoints. And using the appropriate cleaners on campuses to make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing. And then the last piece I wanted to mention, of course, is our personal protective equipment. This has been something we've been paying a lot of attention to, making sure that we have enough of. That's been the big question, will we have enough? And the answer is we are working very hard to make sure we have enough and we are filling up the warehouse rapidly. Just this week, we had another large order from the state with their assistance arriving. So we are continuing to get all of that personal protective equipment in. We will have masks for students, we will have masks for staff, gloves will be available for folks. So we're getting that equipment in, we're going to continue to get that equipment in. And of course, wanted to, because it is a super popular question that we get from folks. Are face coverings required when we return to campus? At this point, it is a state order, so they would be required. And certainly as state guidance and local guidance continues to evolve, we'll evaluate that guidance as it changes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Bassinelli to take us through the instructional models.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be reviewing several learning model options. And that are being prepared for implementation during the 2020-21 school year. Mr. Allen, I just want to confirm that I'm going to start screen sharing.
Yes, please.
We am not enabled with permissions.
Try now.
You able to see the presentation?
Yes, you're good to go.
Great. Unfortunately, it started me to the beginning. Okay, great. So as I mentioned tonight, we'll be reviewing several learning options being prepared for potential implementation for the school year. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge all the leadership in our division of teaching and learning, as well as our leadership with the San Juan Teachers Association. Our principals, other administrators, leaders and teachers who help contribute to the development of these models. These models include a strengthened distance learning program, an expanded transitional kindergarten through eighth grade homeschool program, and a nine-to-two independent study program. Additionally, it includes an in-person learning program that includes both a full day, five-a-week in-person program and a modified program with reduced in-person days. Before I begin to go into greater detail around the individual models themselves, I want to first start with how they are organized on a continuum. This continuum was designed to be fluid and responsive to the ever-changing landscape related to the COVID-19 pandemic. At the top of the continuum, you will see state and local health guidance and orders serving as an overarching concept or a North Star. Spanning the entire length of the continuum. This represents the intention to shift along the model in accordance with the latest guidance and orders. At the left of the continuum, you will see that distance learning is labeled with an asterisk as the default model for enrollment. This end of the continuum is recommended for implementation when the local health conditions prevent us from safely reopening schools. When our distance on this end of the continuum, students will automatically be enrolled in distance learning and families will have an option to enroll in independent study or homeschool. Should they not want to participate in the distance learning default option. Families making this pivot from distance learning to a San Juan Unified Independent Study or homeschool program will retain their regular school year placement for the 2020-21 school year. Should our local health conditions improve and allow us to physically reopen with social distancing and other safety precautions. We will shift into a modified in-person model as the default enrollment model for students. While also maintaining all other previously mentioned learning models as options for families should they not want to participate in the modified in-person learning model. Should our local conditions improve, allowing us to fully reopen without social distancing. We will shift to the full in-person learning model to the far right of the continuum. While continuing to allow families to participate in the distance learning, independent study and homeschool options. Woven throughout the learning model options and across the continuum is a goal of focused instruction. Across this continuum, students will receive a balanced instructional program that includes instruction and identified essential standards. English language development, specialized services and community building relationships. In support of this goal, we are also building in opportunities for social emotional learning, intervention and acceleration and assessment. Letter grades for secondary students and progress marks towards standards for elementary students will be assigned to students following our regular progress notice and report card timeline. Within all the models along the continuum during the 2020. The first learning model we're going to explore is distance learning. After hearing feedback from students, parents and staff, common themes emerged that served as lessons learned. The first theme centers around reducing variability. In our push to shift quickly into distance learning this past spring. Students experienced a wide degree of variability regarding synchronous or live time with their teacher. Variability in the volume of independent work and variability in the learning management platforms. We have heard the feedback and know that we need to tighten up in those areas and provide more structured experiences. Additionally, in terms of variability, we heard very clearly that we need to improve our students for our services for students with disabilities and our distance learning platform. This is an area that we continue to dig deeply into and plan around. The next theme was safety nets. Again, with the quick shift into distance learning, traditional accounting systems for tracking student attendance and participation. Became obsolete and it made it challenging to ensure all students were accessing instructional content and getting the support they need. Next school year, it is our intention that each school site has a more robust and active safety net protocol and process. That's systematized and implemented to ensure students get what they need academically. The next theme that emerged was strengthening school to home connections. We heard that students need and desire regular, consistent and structured opportunities to connect with their peers, teachers and other school support staff. Additionally, we heard that parents and guardians need and desire more frequent and meaningful opportunities to provide feedback. give input, and engage in dialogue around the learning program and their child's individual needs. The last large theme that emerged was support for practitioner implementation. As a system, we really did shift quickly into uncharted territory. And although our practitioners did their best to navigate and support our students, we know we can do better and intend to do better in supporting their success and delivering a high-quality instructional program. What we heard was that we need to encourage and support our practitioners by narrowing the scope of instruction and improving our focus around utilizing essential standard guidelines. Also, by developing a bank of distance learning lessons to serve as a resource for our practitioners. And providing meaningful development, professional development for our practitioners in successful implementation of distance learning instruction. We've been working over the summer to strengthen the distance learning model in the following ways. First, by building structured virtual school days that consist of scheduled daily live synchronous interaction with teachers and peers. Daily assignments and activities that are completed asynchronously and independently by students. The time value of both the daily live synchronous and asynchronous activities will, if not meet those instructional minutes that you see on the screen, but possibly exceed them. And these are instructional minutes that were called out in Senate Bill 98 most recently. Second, by identifying the Google Classroom as a single point of entry for all of our students into the virtual classroom, this will allow more equity and access and reduce the variability. Once our students are inside the virtual classroom, they will engage in a variety of content and activities and learning experiences that are designed for their classroom teacher. Lastly, by improving communication and stakeholder input at the school level to empower families, students, and communities with current school level information and opportunities to participate in providing feedback and input related to distance model learning programs. On this screen, you see a sample elementary distance learning format. This sample represents a possible format for a student in elementary, general education, and mild moderate special education. You will notice that there are synchronous, live interaction times allocated for core content areas, classroom meetings, which may also serve as a platform for social emotional learning, designated ELD, IEP services, and support center services. Additionally, you will notice that asynchronous or independent work is included daily, allowing for a student to go deeper with concepts that have been previously taught, preview concepts not yet taught, or engage informative and summative assessments. On this schedule, you will see that Wednesdays serve as a day for live classroom meeting or check-in, targeted support or a small group instruction, IEP services, and designated ELD. You will note that embedded within the Wednesday time is time for teachers to plan, collaborate, communicate with families, and engage in professional learning. A sample schedule for moderate to severe special education programs and services will be forthcoming as it's developed. Within this secondary sample, you will see daily live synchronous times for each period of the day in addition to asynchronous activities and assignments. Traditional schedules, also known as six-period days, are broken up across two days, Monday and Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday, with block schedules or four-by-four schedules experiencing all four periods a day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesdays, similarly to the elementary model, allow for opportunity for student support, parent and student contacts, teacher preparation, collaboration, and participation in professional development. Not shown on this slide, but also a possibility for Wednesdays is the opportunity for a 15-minute per-period check-in for all students in their courses. This would be a 90-minute block of time for traditional and a 60-minute block of time for our block schools. As with the elementary sample format, a sample schedule for moderate-severe education programs in secondary will be forthcoming as it's developed. San Juan Unified's transitional kindergarten through eighth grade homeschool model will be expanded to accommodate enrollment for families who are seeking alternative to the default learning option and desire to educate their child themselves. Within this model, parents partner with an advisory teacher to create a customized educational plan for their child. Unlike the distance learning model, parents and guardians are responsible for planning the lessons, delivering of instruction, and grading of assignments. The advisory teacher provides curriculum, resources, teaching tips, and educational advice to the parent or guardian. Another key difference between homeschool and distance learning is that students who participate in distance learning are a part of a classroom of peers, whereas the homeschool instruction is independent of the classroom without classroom peer interaction. For students in grades nine through 12, each high school will offer an independent learner program modeled after the district's existing program at El Serena High School. Within this model, students are assigned to a master teacher with whom they meet with weekly to help guide their work delivered primarily through online learning platforms. This is different than distance learning in that the interaction with the teacher is once a week rather than daily, and the bulk of student work is completed independently. Students are accountable to the same district graduation requirements as they are in our distance learning model and are required to complete 240 minutes of instruction each day, just as in distance learning. Because this model allows for continued enrollment at a student's regular school, students are able to participate in their regular school athletics and extracurricular activities as the local health guidance allows. This new model, the modified in-person model, was designed to allow for in-person instruction while maintaining social distancing requirements. Within this model, students are co-horted within two groups at a school with one cohort physically attending school on Monday and Tuesday, and another cohort physically attending on Thursday and Friday. Students experience daily live interaction either in person or remotely and also engage in independent asynchronous work on remote learning days. Wednesdays, which are designed as remote learning days, allow for the same differentiated supports as in the distance learning model, while also setting aside time for teachers to plan, connect with parents and students, and collaborate and learn. You will notice that the schedule of Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, with Wednesdays being remote, mirrors the same schedule as the distance learning model. This is by design and positions us to more easily transition back and forth between the models as local health guidance and orders allow. When we shift to this model, it is our intent to keep K-12 siblings within the same cohort at each of their respective schools. Now we are going to explore the modified in-person model for special education centers and programs for moderate-severe students. This model includes a four-day-a-week in-person experience with Wednesdays being a remote learning day. As you can see, this modified model provides for more in-person days so that we can appropriately meet the needs of our moderate-to-severe special education population while also implementing social distancing guidelines. To support instructional practice in each of these models, we've been preparing over the summer in three key ways. The first way is through the identification of the essential standards at each grade level, which you can see on the illustration to the right of the screen. The second is we've been working hard on distance learning lesson development that's aligned to these essential standards to be used for asynchronous instruction. As a part of this work, 75 teachers were selected to build lessons on a variety of content areas ranging from English language arts and math to world language, science, social studies, and visual and performing arts, including also moderate-severe populations in our dual immersion program. These teachers, who were lesson designers, were supported with lesson design training and exemplars to help them in their work of development of these lessons. The training that they included, the training that they participated in included a variety of topics. I want to mention a few such as fostering successful distance learning, technology integration, assessments, supporting English learners, and the implementation of social justice standards. As a part of the lesson design process, our designers used a common lesson planning template to support equity and access and a rubric to calibrate and strengthen their lesson design work. The 75 distance learning lesson designers found their training and preparation so helpful that they recommended that the same training be allowed available to all of our teachers. And as such, we're preparing opportunities for professional development in the distance learning lesson design and best practices to support all of our teachers in implementing distance learning instruction across our continuum. The following video will give you more of a window into this work.
When the district suddenly suspended classes on campus in March due to the COVID-19 pandemic, teachers and
Melissa, the audio seems to have cut out from your machine.
When the district suddenly suspended classes on campus in March due to the COVID-19 pandemic, teachers and students transitioned to distance learning, a platform no one had expected. Now, having learned what did and didn't work, the district is hiring 80 of our experienced teachers to develop lesson plans any teacher can use based on what was learned.
We had parent surveys and teacher surveys. And in looking at the feedback from both the parent surveys and the teacher surveys, some key themes emerged. And one of those key themes that emerged was the need for some consistency. We really looked at was how can we create some consistency in building some online lessons that can support families?
These lessons aren't meant to replace the student-teacher connection, but rather support teachers as the possibility of teaching in person and distance learning simultaneously becomes a reality.
We wanted to support all of our teachers and all of our learners by developing this lesson bank that is aligned to these essential power standards across these content areas so that teachers could focus and best use their in-person time when they're with their students on the work that is best done during those in-person meetings and know that they have a resource of high-quality, thoughtfully-designed lessons to draw from.
This survey also highlighted the need for hitting essential standards and using equity when it comes to technology, therefore making it accessible to all students.
When I created the lesson, I try and hit the standard itself. So if the standard is number sense up to 20, then that is the standard I'm hitting. So what do I think a first grader should have? But then I offer some support such as the lesson I just wrote yesterday incorporated a song. It was a free YouTube video of a song that we might do in the classroom of someone singing the numbers one through 20, adding them together. The number and the word form is up on the screen, so then they offer support.
I'm using our new history adoption for the school district, which is McGraw-Hill. I'm using that curriculum as the base and the bulk of the work is coming from there. But I'm also including things such as all of the work. I've redone audio recordings for all of the student slides. That way, students can hear an actual, real-life person reading the information for them. So that way, they have access to the text. And that way, we can actually assess their standards and not their reading capabilities.
Teachers say, although they'd rather have their students with them, they are doing the best they can for their students and families.
I would say to all of our families and students out there, that we are all learning. But all of us are so committed to making sure that we're giving our students the highest quality education possible.
Ms. Bassinelli, if you would like to take over screen share again.
Thank you. So in terms of technology, in preparation for the school year, we currently have approximately 25,000 usable Chromebooks in stock with additional ones on order. As a part of the re-enrollment emergency card process, families will continue their they will communicate their technology needs so that we can coordinate our Chromebook deployment at the site level in addition with our instructional materials textbook distribution. In addition to Chromebooks, we have identified an Android tablet device that will be used for our transitional kindergarten and ECE programs. Additionally, we're also looking at our earbud options to assist our students with their Zoom conferencing. We will continue to assist families with internet connectivity either through referrals to internet providers or by providing cellular hotspots. In terms of the platform support, as I previously mentioned, Google Classroom will serve as the universal point of entry for students into the virtual classroom. Within the classroom, teachers will continue to use instructional tools and resources that best fit their lesson and provide links to materials within the Google Classroom. In addition to the lesson design element of professional learning that I previously mentioned, we will also provide professional development around the platforms that you see on the screen. In looking at additional areas needing further development, we continue to work collaboratively with labor groups in our learning model development and job responsibilities. The provision of childcare has been a challenge to plan across our continuum as current childcare guidelines and restrictions cause one specific program, our Discovery Club program budget, run in arrears each month and not maintain fiscal solvency. Our Discovery Club and Bridges After School administrators are working collaboratively together to identify viable self-supporting childcare solutions for each phase of our continuum. Our distance learning services for our moderate-to-severe populations as well as our preschool infant toddler programs continue to be a high-priority project for us that staff are working very hard to solve. And with our rapidly evolving conditions, we continue to work to revise our communication and outreach to our stakeholders.
Thank you, Ms. Bassinelli, for that presentation. And so President Viasca is at this time, we're asking the board, or we will be asking the board. I believe we're going to do the public comment first to approve the learning model continuum. And so I think you'll have a motion later regarding that. And if you can go to the next slide again, I wanted to just reiterate what was previously shared about the lessons that we did learn and strengthening those models. And I think this is the commitment that we want to make to the community that is going to be our focus as we're moving into this fall. I said it before, we have to absolutely improve what we are providing for our students, for all students in our district, and that will be our focus. And we will be having conversations with school leaders. I'll actually be doing that tomorrow about their role in this work. And then continuing to gather feedback and input from both students and community members as we go through this process as well. So at this time, President Viasca, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern, and thank you to staff for the thorough presentation. As Superintendent Kern mentioned, at this time, we will now move into public comment. We are eager to hear from our parents and the community. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Viasca, if you've joined us via Zoom today, we'd ask, and you would like to make a comment on tonight's agenda, we'd ask that you raise your hand at this time. To do so, To do so, there should be a raise-hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you are on a desktop platform, so a web browser or the Zoom app on your desktop computer. If you have called in today and you would like to raise your hand, press star nine on your telephone keypad. In some instances, you may need to display the participants' window to be able to click the raise-hand button, but it should be in that black bar at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to raise your hand at this time. And again, we would ask you to raise your hand if you are on the Zoom call with us and would like to offer a public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. At this time, we do have a number of hands raised through the Zoom platform. Just want to confirm with staff, I'll go through them and indicate kind of who's on deck, but if you can help me keep track, I certainly appreciate the assistance. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, first up is Doug Sinclair, followed by Jennifer Collins. Doug, please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
I am ready, thank you. I do appreciate the board and what they're doing, and I do appreciate them giving this an opportunity to give them, give us our input. And I am in favor of bringing back the children to school. I believe that the good outweigh the bad. My child is a special needs child. I think that even has a little bit more influence as far as him coming back. I believe that there's only maybe, say, 10 to 15 children in his classes. So I think for social distancing, I think that it would be pretty easy to accomplish, especially for a special needs child. That's really all that I had to say, and I hope that you will consider my request to bring the children back. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Next up, we have Jennifer Collins, followed by Jennifer Gumm.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify, my son's going to the second grade, and when it says that the plan was 230 minutes for in-person or for the on-school learning, I just wanted to know, is that per day or per week? When it talked about the guidelines for how many minutes of instruction they're going to have, I wasn't sure.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for joining. We'll have staff address that when we return back to discussion.
Okay, great. And then my other question, I guess, is just, am I cut off now?
You can still use. Well, I think Mr. Allen restarted the clock, but.
Okay. And I just wanted to also ask, I know, again, he's at the, still at the age where we really, you know, the parent really has to do the learning with him. I mean, he's not old enough to go into the computer and do the learning himself. So I guess I just wanted to know about what additional resources you're going to have. You know what I mean, where we actually need someone to help him do this school. My husband and I both work full-time, so we're going to need someone to, I just wanted to know the resources we'll have to help him do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for joining us. Next up, we have Jennifer Gumm, followed by Stacy Ballen.
Hello, board. We appreciate you setting this platform up for us all to have a discussion with you about this really important matter. Our question on this side was, it kind of went by a little fast, but the 240 minutes, that's just instructional information as opposed to in-person with the teacher on Zoom. It looks like that's going to work out to 100 minutes. Can you let us know if that is the case? That's the first question. The next one is, I might, myself, I'm an essential worker. The governor is, has established that. So doing roads, bridges, infrastructure building. And I'm just curious how the school comes to the conclusion that you're not as essential as us working on the construction portion of infrastructure? And is this a way for the district to pave the ground for one teacher teaching 50 students remotely? And this was something that we're going to look into in the future. I'm hoping that's not the case because our daughter, I know she's struggling with the social distance from her students and the curriculum. Last year was a mess, and I think you guys understand that for the social or the remote learning. I'm hoping that this year, as it starts, we address a more in-person kind of a situation. I could see the teacher teaching in the class by herself, maybe with her kids or his kids while on Zoom for eight hours, and I could see that working. It's working for us on this platform. I could see it working for them. That's all I had on that.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next up, we have Stacy Ballen, followed by Julian Newhauser. Okay, Stacy Ballen is no longer on the lineup there, so we're going to go to Julian Newhauser, followed by user Nicole9903. Julia, please begin when you're ready.
Hello, I just wanted to say, I mean, I heard a couple blips about early childhood, but it didn't really touch on what we are supposed to be doing. You know, we're part of the district, we're supposed to be integrated, and everything says TK through 12 and does not address ECE. Our students were left without Chromebooks or iPads last year, having to do distance learning on cell phones. And I would just hope that we could become a part of the district where we're on the agenda and part of these conversations. And also, my personal opinion is that we are now causing more damage to children than the effects of COVID. I mean, we're suffering so many mental health crises with families, and I just think we need to be in our classrooms with our students because the effects outweigh the effects of COVID. And that's it.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next up, we have Nicole9903, followed by username indicated as Lam, which, Nicole, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, so my daughter has three learning disabilities. She has auditory processing, a visual processing, and a retention disorder. I, last year, had several teachers state that they were hesitant to get on Zoom calls. I want to make sure that the teachers are going to be required to get on Zoom calls. It's hard when I am a central worker and I'm working from home, I'm fortunate enough to be working from home, but there was many times that she's supposed to be doing a certain class from time A to time B, and I'm the supervisor, so I'm running my own staff, and I'm not available to help her answer her questions. And being that she has a visual processing disorder, she doesn't understand the email that the teacher's sending, and yet the teacher wants her to reply in an email. Well, if she doesn't understand it, how is she going to reply in this email to get instructions? And yes, I am her parent, and yes, I am supposed to help her, but many times she's having to wait till I can get a break or I'm off work. I mean, there was times we were up until 11 o'clock at night doing homework just so it wouldn't be late. There has to be some type of accountability for these teachers as well as you want the students to be a certain amount of minutes in Google Classroom, but when you have, and then you can't get a hold of any office staff either. So I can't even talk to an office staff to go over my concerns, we just have to email. That's, that's really all I had.
Thank you very much, Nicole, for joining us and for your comments. Next up, we have username Lam or L-A-M, followed by Cindy Manthe. Please begin when you're ready. User Lam, you're unmute. You'll have to unmute your device. We'll try one more time. Lam, with your hand raised, you're currently on, there you go.
Hi, sorry about.
There we go. No, that's okay.
Our experience at Bella Vista High School, our child had a cohort of amazing teachers who did a really fantastic job in difficult situations. That being said, he was spending 14 or 16 hours a day working between synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. And I'm one, I didn't see anything addressing the need to scale the amount of work that is being expected of these kids, whether they're doing distance learning or whether they're doing part-time in-person learning, just due to the stress and craziness. I just haven't seen anything addressed then. The other thing, my concern is that I haven't seen anything address the difference in risk for younger children, say K through five, and high school students. It's becoming clear that the age range for higher risk for COVID-19 starts at high school age. So between that and not really seeing things that make me look comfortable, make me feel comfortable with how having even 20 kids in a classroom right now, high school age is going to be handled sufficiently, I'm not convinced that returning to classrooms right now is the answer. And that's all.
Thank you very much for joining us and for your comments. Next up, we have Cindy Manthe, followed by Stacy Perez. Cindy, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my question concern is between the IEP's 504s accommodations within the classrooms, how it would work whether we're doing homeschooling or distance learning because of the accommodations that are required, the assignments being different, and how we would actually access a resource in the mod being at home or distance learning? If the time allotted, 240 minutes, whether it's a day or a week, would we be able to have one-on-one with resource at our designated school, or would it be something different and what the model would be? And then addressing, my daughter is transitioning from fifth grade to a sixth-grade middle school, and so there's a lot of things that would normally be addressed, and she's already behind and below grade level. So how that all comes into play, whether it's in-distance learning or homeschooling, until we get to that modified, and if we get to the modified again, where do we get that support and how it all plays into keeping her on track and moving forward and advancing? She's someone who definitely needs the social, so part of me is yay, go back to school, but the other part is I'm not ready to release her to the world and really needing more support as far as the resource and the social aspect and emotional aspect of where we are now. That's it.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Next, we have Stacy Perez, followed by the Baker family. Stacy, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so we have an incoming senior at Bella Vista High School. Based on the distance learning from what we did in his junior year, we had a really hard time. I was completely understanding, but he did end up failing in class and is now in summer school for it, and we're still experiencing difficulties. He is an ADHD child, as well as has anxiety, and he's on an IEP. So I'm very concerned about the options being offered. Distance learning is too overwhelming for him because of having to have six classes. And the option for independent study is looking a little bit better, but I would like to know what are the IEP resources for independent study? As he's doing his work throughout the week, where can he turn to get assistance for things? My husband and I are both essential employees and cannot be come with him all of the time. So therefore, the distance learning requiring requiring him to do 240 minutes a day is not an option. It's too much for him. He cannot sit at a computer for four hours a day and focus on his work. So I really would like to know what are these special education options between the different platforms? I don't necessarily feel like the, what's being put out is really answering the fine-tuned questions that a lot of us have about special education. That's all.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Next up, we have the Baker family, followed by Lance Christensen. The Baker family, please begin when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, hi. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something someone else said, is the workload on the family in the distance learning. It requires a lot of parental intervention, and when you have multiple kids, you get stretched quite thin, and I'd like to see more teacher assistance during the distance learning than we had last year. And then the other thing is, I wanted to confirm my understanding that if you move to, from the distance learning to an in-person or hybrid model, does that mean that the distance learning comes to an end as an option? That's all I had.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Lance Christensen, followed by Julie.
Hi, Lance Christensen, thanks for having me on. I've testified a few times in these board hearings. I appreciate all the work you're putting into this, Superintendent and board members. I think we're missing a few things that haven't been addressed today. So in addition to all the questions you've already had, one, I'd like to know if you've already made the decision, you're just trying to rationalize it. It doesn't seem to me that you've asserted whatever authority you have as a board to go forward and make this independent, what are the county recommendations are. So I'd like to understand that process, one. To those that work and have sent their kids to childcare, how on earth are they supposed to negotiate any education for the kids while they're in childcare? This is for single parents, for dual income earners, for other people? And then how do you mitigate transmission any better than you would in a classroom? That's one question. Another is, how many of our high schools attract students because of athletics or extracurriculars? What are we going to do with all those kids that won't have that this year? And for many of them, is incentive to have a decent GPA? For the kids that want to do this stuff but aren't sure if it's going to be available, what sort of assurances will we have that later on this year, at any point in time, that these activities will be able to resume? And for those of us that sit on booster club, booster clubs within the district, should we be raising money for our kids? Should we address those issues for athletic seasons that might happen? And then how are you going to accommodate those that just want a choice? I would ask that as you go through and make this decision, I know it's hard, I totally get it, and I know many of you personally worked very hard to make this difficult decision. I would ask that you not deprive parents of a choice. If there are those teachers and parents that want to go back to school full-time, please let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Next up, we have Julie, followed by Charmin Galring, and I invite you to correct me if I mispronounce your name, and I apologize. Julie, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, thank you for listening, and I know that this is such a crazy time. I mean, I just shut down my salon for the second time, so I know this is, it's just been insane. And my first question And my first question, I guess, is, I didn't hear, I either missed it or I didn't hear it, but the 240 minutes for second graders, is that a week or is that a day? Again, my son, I mean, he's seven years old, four hours a day staring at a computer screen, unless it's Roblox, is not going to keep him, you know, it's not going to keep his focus. I just don't know what I'm going to do about that. Also, he also is an EIP student with speech. You talked about the medium to severe children with disabilities, but what are you doing to support, you know, the speech kids that maybe aren't quite there? You know, honestly, as a mom, none of this makes sense. None of, you know, none of the choices is a fit for us. And I don't know what the right thing is, but I just, I don't see my child sitting in front of a computer for four hours a day. I just don't see it. And I hope and I know that you guys do have the best intentions. Hopefully, this isn't political. I just, it just doesn't, nothing just seems right, and I just don't know what to do. And I think a lot of parents are there, and especially parents that are working full-time. So I hope that you do consider, you know, their needs and their ones over, you know, I don't know, if there's any political thing in the background. But anyways, thank you so much, and you guys work hard, and thank you for listening. That's all.
Thank you for joining us, Julie. Next up, we have Carmen, followed by Jessica Delick.
Hi, my name is Charmin Garing. I'm a teacher in the district, actually, and I work at one of the mods severe centers. And I would like some more information about how the decision to have mods severe potentially come back four days a week onsite was decided when we probably are the population is least likely to be able to socially distance. At my center, we, I think, lost this past year four students without even having COVID in play. And so I know I have families that were refusing to send their kids back because it's not safe, and is wondering how the plan came to be, have us onsite four days a week when there's no chance of socially distancing. We have kids that will not be able to wear face cloth coverings, and was kind of curious about the plan for that. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have Jessica Delick, followed by Cheyenne Cook. Jessica, please begin when you're ready. Jessica, it shows that you're currently on mute, so if you're trying to speak, we can't hear you.
Is that, am I there now?
There we go. Yes, you're there.
Hi, apologies again. Thank you for taking the time. Just wanted to say, I know it's not an easy decision, but I appreciate in considering as someone who has lost friends and loved ones to COVID, that keeping my kid safe is my number one priority. So whatever resources you're putting in place, and if that is distance learning, I'm completely okay with that for now, until the science can just tell us more about how to more effectively deal with the pandemic and its effects on, you know, those we love. Secondarily, I don't know if I missed it, but I wanted to know when there was going to be some information put out about athletics. I do have a daughter who is an athlete at the school, at Bella Vista High School as well. So I don't know if any decisions have been made on that or if a timeframe has been given for what that kind of a fall sports season, spring sports season looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheyenne Cook, followed by Jen Souza.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for taking all of our comments. My name's Cheyenne Cook. We have twin boys that were in Murraymont. They were in kindergarten, going into first grade. In reviewing the sample lesson plan that you called out, it calls for 20-minute increments of 100 minutes total of live instruction. This household, we both work full-time with demanding jobs. Sometimes we can be in an office and sometimes we can't. But if I had to juggle my conference call schedule with five to nine Zooms a day, that's problematic for us, and it's a disadvantage for the children to get access to their learning. They won't be able to pause, they won't be able to rewind, they won't be able to ask questions. So it would be really nice to have a morning one, allow a live in the morning, one live, two live, however many the teacher feels is best, and then allow the teacher to do pre-recorded sessions for the parents to go at their time and work schedule. In the end, we all want the best for our kids, but it's really frustrating when the demands are so all over the place. And this may not work for every family, so I would ask that the district leave it up to the teacher. The teacher prescribe what's best for their classroom, for their age group, instead of the district mandating a certain schedule to adhere to. I also want to bring up the note of private schools. San Juan has a huge inequity between very wealthy and very poor schools. So if you're a Title I school, or even if you're in a very wealthy school, we have neighboring private schools where kids are getting five days instructions. You stated yourself that distance learning is not the best. That already is putting public school kids at an educational disadvantage. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Next up, we have Jen Souza.
Hi. So basically, somebody else had just also said about the ECE program had gotten left behind last year. I have one child in the ECE program and one child in the first grade or going into the first grade, and I don't have much information about where they're going or any information about their teachers. And I'm trying to get the breakdown on how the distance learning will go, like, will work, and is ECE program going with the distance learning also? Because I don't see much of any type of actual breakdown of what the distance learning looks like. An ECE program is completely out of the whole distance learning. So I'm trying to get the breakdown on both programs, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, for joining us. At this point, I'm going to take a short pause for public comment. Our, the regular rules of our meeting permit public comment up to 30 minutes, and after that require an extension. So for one second, I'm going to turn it to my colleagues really quickly and ask, do board members wish to extend the time for visitor comments? And if so, for how long?
Yes, and for as long as it takes. It's my motion, if you need one. You need to hear from everyone.
I welcome a couple more comments, but there is a motion as well. Would anybody like to weigh in?
When we've done this in the past, we've extended for 30 minutes, and then to see how much more time we need. But I do agree with the board member, Greason. We're going to listen to all of them.
But I think we should do it in 30-minute increments.
Okay, so, well, after the initial extension, we can extend it for as much as possible. So we're in keeping with protocol, and so it's just a matter of do we want to keep pausing and extending versus hearing everybody out, which I think is the will.
Or still there. Paula, how many people are still have their?
We have about 100 more.
100 more? Okay.
I just, I understand the sentiment and what has been in the past, but I'm just wondering, is it going to burn more time? We know that we're going to listen to everyone. Is it going to burn time to keep, you know, stopping and pausing and doing another motion? That was my thought and why I posed the motion the way I did.
Ms. Costa, do you have any thoughts?
We've heard 16 speakers in 30 minutes, so if we keep going, let's just keep going.
Okay, well, there is a motion to extend to hear the remainder of public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. With that, we will return to public comment. I've got on the screen username Dobbins, followed by Brittany Schroder.
Okay. Thank you for letting us comment and post our questions. Hopefully, the board has some process to capture these comments and release the answers. And we just have a quick one. Will high school students be able to do a mix of distance learning and independent study, given that some courses may be more amenable to an independent study format in a pre-existing platform, while other platforms are better for distance learning? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next up, we have Brittany Schroder, followed by Teresa Arnold.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, wonderful. First, I just want to say thank you for working through this. You guys are all essential workers, every board member, every district member, every teacher, everybody that's involved. That being said, I am also an essential worker. I work for the state of California, five days a week, Monday through Friday, nine to five, no questions asked. My daughter is coming into kindergarten this year, and with distance learning, I'm having to choose between my work and making sure my daughter, quote, attends school. I didn't see or hear any suggestions, any compromises, anything that could potentially help us, single parents, you know, I got the world on my back at this point. We all do. It would be really nice, you know, it was mentioned before, if we could have teachers pre-record their lessons and have it available after the fact. So, you know, when I get home, my daughter and I can do schoolwork, sit down and do it together. We're all getting put in a really tough spot, and I don't want to have to choose between my livelihood and making sure my daughter gets an education. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brittany. Next up, we have Teresa Arnold, followed by Amy.
Hello, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the team that's been putting together this whole distance learning. I'm very amazed by the slideshows you guys put together tonight, completely different from what we just experienced a couple months ago. But I do have a child, and I'm going with the theme tonight of IEP. I have a child that has auditory processing and sensory issues. So if we're sitting that long in front of a computer, I'm very, very concerned. I'm also concerned because we do not have enough resource teachers at our school. So I see that there's IEP available for the child during the week, but how are we going to do that when they couldn't do it, you know, at the end of the school year? How are we going to do it now for our children? I have paid so much money for tutoring when he has an IEP. I shouldn't be having to pay money out of my own pocket, but I'm already looking for tutoring because I'm very concerned he's not going to get what he needs. And he is going into eighth grade. He is about a year and a half behind in everything, and I'm very concerned for him going into his, you know, high school years, not ready and not prepared. So that's my main concern, is having them sit that long, his auditory processing, how he's going to learn in front of a computer. Yes, can they be recorded? Will the teachers work with the children? Will we have more staff on hand? Will they be able to take breaks throughout the day, just like at school? And my other concern with a child that has sensory issues, when we do go back into classrooms, how do you take care of a child that has a sensory issue, will have a hard time with face cloth? What can we do for those children so that they are still able to learn in the environment or this different environment? Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you for joining us, Teresa. Next up, we have Amy, followed by username Brash, and I apologize in advance for mispronouncing names. Amy, please begin when you're ready.
Okay, I think I've got it. Is it working?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was having trouble. So I have a newly, a new kindergartner coming in for the fall 2020 year, as well as my daughter is now going into third grade at Gold River Discovery Center. So my main questions are, has the decision already been made for the teaching model? Or are there still the three different teaching models available? I was kind of confused between listening in as well as looking on the school website, district website, actually. So, and also, I'm asking the same questions as others. Is it four hours of Zoom or computer time per day? Or is that per week, doing the Monday, Tuesday, then Thursday, Friday thing? So that's all I had.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have username Brash, followed by Kristin Saraji. Brash, please begin when you're ready, and I apologize in advance for mispronouncing your name.
Hi, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our concern. And I understand that we need to do distance learning because this is a contagious and dangerous virus. And I agree with the distance learning. But how are our teachers going to be held accountable for making sure that we understand or that they're actually holding the Zooms? Because last year, the majority of my teachers either didn't have Zooms or they just canceled them constantly. So it was very hard, and it was difficult to learn the new topics because I had to end up teaching them to myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us and adding your voice to this discussion. Next, we have Kristin Saraji, followed by Caroline Digman.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I have two kids. I have a daughter going into fifth grade and a son going into kindergarten, who was in the TK program last year. And I think it's a pretty big consensus that the distance learning, sure, was a joke. My 10-year-old had an hour and a half each day of learning, and then two Zoom meetings a week with her teacher. Well, the girl across the street, who's at the same school, had Zoom meetings every single day with her teacher. Also, for my kindergartner, the program you use, Seesaw, is, I don't know if anyone has actually sat down and tried to use that on a computer, but it's an absolute joke. I want my kids to be independent to a certain point, and my child can't be independent when I have to sit there and navigate the program on a Chromebook and even on my phone. So I honestly, and hopefully, you guys take the suggestion to provide tablets for the kindergarteners and anyone else who also uses the Seesaw program. Because you're not teaching kids how to be independent when their parents are constantly having to do the work for them. I also want to know specifically what trainings the teacher have had to keep these kids entertained. Because if anyone actually sat in on a Zoom meeting for TK or kindergarten, it's like herding cats. So I want to know what training they've received to keep these kids engaged over Zoom, and also how to keep them wanting to come to school when it's time to go back with all these extra precautions and not scaring them to think the world is a bad place. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much, Kristin. Next, we have Caroline Digman, followed by Sarah Bancroft.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm entering my sixth year as a teacher. I teach the second grade. I'm a single mother of a beautiful, almost four-year-old little boy who also happens to have a disability. His intervention has been severely impacted due to COVID-19. However, I also care for my mother, who receives biologic infusions for autoimmune diseases. I cannot return to school when cases are up and testing availability is down. It's a terrible situation to be in for everyone, and I wish I were in the classroom with my students, but our health comes first. I am so proud of all the teachers working hard this summer on the distance learning plans. I think we need to keep following county health guidelines. I also want to add that I've been a Seesaw and Google Classroom user in the classroom for two years, and hands down, no contest, Seesaw is best for K-2 students. The tools within Seesaw simply do not exist in Google Classroom to accommodate young children who need to move, who are also learning to read, students with disabilities, and students learning English. I fully support using Google Classroom as the main platform, but young learners absolutely need extra assistance. I urge the board to support teachers and their use of Seesaw, particularly K-2 students, teachers. I also want to add that if teachers return to work sites, I expect every single district employee at district office, board member, and board meetings to be in person as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining. Next, Next, we have Sarah Bancroft, followed by Tracy. Sarah, please begin when you're ready.
Hi. So my question is, my, my primary question is, how do you plan to increase the level of engagement for elementary students for the coming school year with distance learning? Last year, my daughter was in kindergarten, and she was only afforded 20 minutes a week of direct instruction, and only one social Zoom call, which was woefully inadequate under any circumstances. I know that SB 98 will require daily engagement, but I would like to know more specifics on whether you have a plan for young students, including socialization? Because that's one of the biggest parts of those formative years of education for our young children. And just posting homework online really isn't efficient for young students. They need to be engaged with actual content and direct instruction. That being said, I've heard a lot of the other speakers who are talking about having young children engaging in four hours of screen time, and that's also a problem as well. I mean, I don't know that that's appropriate for a six-year-old or seven-year-old, as the case may be. But I am concerned with the distance learning platform. This is going to have educational benefit for my child moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Sarah. Next, we have Tracy, followed by Tara Skinner.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
A couple of things. I know that this is a difficult situation for everybody. And I think everyone can agree that the distance learning last time was ineffective. That being said, my daughter is in a block schedule. She had one teacher that had a Zoom meeting every single day, and the other three did not. So I think someone else mentioned accountability for teachers, that they are there, they are present, and they are teaching. Along with that, there was no grading leniency. The learning she got was insufficient, and she did fail one class. And how could she fail a class when the instruction that she got was insufficient? So is there going to be some kind of grading leniency? Especially those children that have an IEP like my daughter? And then lastly, the 240 minutes is four hours. And I only saw two hours of actual instruction, 30 minutes each subject. So I would like some explanation on how two hours of actual instruction equals four hours of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tara Skinner, followed by Micah Kent.
Hi, I am a teacher. I'm a special education teacher, and I've been teaching, I'm going into my 18th year. And I want to say that I honestly feel that the district so far has reacted in the best way that they could in terms of distance learning and setting up what they can for the teachers and the parents and the students. And I've been a part of different discussions and how we can improve that for all of our students and all of our families. I, myself, have three kids, so I understand parental concerns. But as a special education teacher, I'm just concerned, how will I be able to conduct safely assessments for my students? I really want to be back there with them, but I also want to do this in a safe manner that's not going to jeopardize my own family or my students' families as well. So I just would like to know what supports are they planning for special education, special education teachers for instructions and assessment, IEP planning? And also, a key component of special education is our support personnel. So I would really like to know what essential, like hardware, equipment, or training will be provided to our RAs? So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tara, for joining us. Next, we have Micah Kent, followed by Lydia Melendez.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. First of all, thank you so much for allowing the parents to have an opportunity to have a voice in this situation. My wife and I, we have a five-year-old son who just went through the TK program, and is supposed to be transitioning into kindergarten at Twin Lakes. And he definitely has suffered negatively from this COVID experience in the distance learning that a lot of parents have already voiced has been extremely insufficient. I feel like my son, like a lot of other kids his age, is in this really special pocket of time to where they can learn and really absorb a lot right now. And my wife and I are both essential workers. And again, like other parents I've spoken, are going to be in a situation now to we have to decide who is going to work and who is not going to work, or even if this area is going to be a good place for us to live permanently anymore. So the mental health aspect of it for kids is major right now. And I don't feel like, I understand and respect the choice for parents to not want to bring their kids back to the school. And I fully agree with that, if that is your choice. But the fact that the choice have been stripped away from the parents that do want to send their kids back to school is kind of outrageous. And our kids need to be in an environment to where they can learn from the people who are in that position and have the tools to teach our kids properly. I was home for 11 weeks and was responsible for my kids' learning, and it was horrible. So I think that you need to consider the option for those parents that want to send their kids back to school, to allow them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Micah. Next, we have Lydia Melendez, followed by Condi Montoya.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lydia Melendez. I have three kids in the district. Thank you for your efforts in delivering technology and internet access to students. Unfortunately, distance learning did not work out at all for my family. My middle schooler had six different teachers, and only two of them showed their faces for 20 minutes, once a week, each week. My other kid's teachers from high school did the same thing. I reached out to some of them, most of them didn't even bother to answer. One time, while checking my kid's Google Classroom, I saw that a kid was asking the teacher if he could do a Zoom meeting to explain a topic, and the teacher told him to do his own research. I believe if a student is asking for help, it's the teacher's job to help that student. I saw my kids struggling like never before to keep up with the amount of assignments popping up every day. I struggle seeing my kids doing their best and never catching up and not receiving instruction consistently. I know this pandemic is forcing us to do things differently. But your commitment to deliver a quality education to the kids should still be the same. I ask that you hold your teachers accountable and committed to the delivery of a comprehensive curriculum. And I would expect that ongoing training for your teachers is provided, including training on working with parents and taking consideration the needs of English learners as well. Today, I ask you to remember that the reason you are in business is the kids' education and that you work for them. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Lydia. It doesn't seem that our next individual, Condi, is no longer on here. So I am now going to move to individual Syndal. S-Y-N-D-Y-L, I apologize if I've mispronounced that. And followed by them will be Carrie Sternberg. Syndal, please begin when you're ready.
President, if you ask us, give us one moment. Syndal is on an older version of Zoom. We need to make a quick adjustment for that user.
Got it, thank you for the update. We will make a quick, a very short pause.
Syndal, you should be able to share your comment now.
Hard for me to do my work on the computer because, like, for example, I get math from my teachers, and it's really hard because they used to do it in front of us. And like art, I have an art class, and it's really hard for me to do art because they also did that in front of us too. So it would actually be really helpful if we could, we can go back to school. I mean, like everybody said, if that means we have 30 minutes a day in class on campus, that would be awesome. But other than that, it's what everybody, what everybody else said. It's up to you guys to decide. Safety is precaution. Because I also have an elderly grandma, and I also have a mom that has COPD. So it's really hard for them for it. So, yeah. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for joining us.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Carrie Sternberg, followed by Iris. Carrie, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Carrie Sternberg, and I have two kids in the district. In regards to moderate and severe disabilities, you guys mentioned twice that information regarding distance learning for those kids will be forthcoming as it's developed. Distance learning in the spring for the kids with moderate severe disabilities did not work. So it's a little bit disheartening to hear that there currently is no plan for them moving forward. It sounds like the district has not figured out how to make distance learning work for our kids. In addition, most of our kids receive physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy through the district. Those are all services that can be done one-to-one. They can all be done safely with the providers wearing masks. All of those services are being currently provided in the private sector. In California, they've all been listed as essential. And the California Department of Education has mentioned that those services can be provided in person by the district in exceptional cases. Our kids with severe disabilities need their services. They have gone five months with not only no education at all and no classroom activities, but no physical therapy, no speech therapy, no occupational therapy. It is not only detrimental to their access to education, but it's detrimental to their health. So I urge you guys to consider offering services in person, even if classrooms are distance learning. Also, if we could receive some information before school starts on what happens with homeschooling for children with IEPs and whether they will still get services provided through that program. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us. Next up, we have Iris, followed by Eric Toon. Iris, please begin when you're ready. We can't quite hear you, Iris. Can you maybe get a little bit closer to your microphone?
How about now?
That's a lot better, thank you.
Okay, first, I want to say thanks to the Thomas Edison teachers because at least our teacher was beyond amazing. My question is, for the ones that decide to homeschool, are we going to be able to choose our curriculum and materials? Or is the material the same for everybody? Depending on their grade, of course. And, and please, don't ask the kids to sit in front of a computer for 230 minutes a day. There is no way that they're going to be able to pay attention for longer than an hour. That's it.
Thank you very much for joining us and for your comment. Next, Eric Toon, followed by Renee Wright.
Hi, I have two elementary school kids in the district. One of them's really not old enough to use the computer without a lot of supervision, and the other one has been so depressed by the lockdown that he has no incentive. And there's nothing we can do to incentivize him to use the computer to go to Zoom. So we're both working parents. We're gone eight to five. So we could theoretically do four hours a night with them when we get home, but that would not be contemporaneous when the teachers are online. So we won't have any of their support. They have had absolutely zero learning since March because of the lockdown. We talked to their teachers about repeating the grades last year, and they said, no, that wouldn't be accepted. Everybody's in the same boat, so just let them go on, even though they're not ready to go on. So we're really considering if this school year doesn't change, that we need to just take a sabbatical from school. So I want to know what is being done with the truancy laws, given that there is no school. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next up, we have Renee, followed by Bill Simmons.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I have a son who was enrolled in TK. As, and as everyone has stated, distance learning does not work for young children, especially a TK child or a kindergarten child. And I would think that the school district would recognize that and realize how important the first five years of a child's life. This is where my son should be absorbing everything and learning everything. And distance learning isn't going to work. We limit our child's screen time. So now we want to sit him in front of a computer where he's supposed to learn? How is that even possible? And what's even a little more baffling to me is I can go a mile away from my son's assigned elementary school and pay for my son to go to private school. Or I can move a mile down the road in another direction, and the public school's open. I can go to Placer County, El Dorado County, their public schools are open. I don't understand why this board is not recognizing how important in-person learning is to children. I understand the risks of COVID. I understand, people who are nervous are afraid. Stay home, don't come to school. However, there should be an option for children and for parents who want to send their children to school. I think the risk and the damage and the harm that is coming to my child not being in school cannot be replaced. And it baffles me that this board doesn't seem to recognize that and the urgency of children needing to be in school. I'm actually a stay-at-home mother, so I have all the time in the world to educate my son. However, I cannot take the place of a classroom or being around other children. I hope everyone remembers this when it's time to vote.
Thank you very much, Renee. Next up, we have Bill Simmons, followed by Pat Wagner.
Members of the Board and Superintendent Kern, I am Bill Simmons, a teacher and president of the San Juan Teachers Association. I represent 2,400 teachers, counselors, librarians, nurses, speech-language pathologists, and social workers that serve students from infant toddlers to preschool to transitional kindergarten through 12th grade and adult education. All of our practitioners want to be back with our students in person. But during this pandemic, when the number of cases of COVID-19 are rising in our community, we want to thank you for considering the health and safety of our students and our colleagues at this critical time. I also want to remind the Board and the public that in cooperation with the superintendent and district staff, we have over 90 classroom teachers, teachers on special assignment, consulting teachers, peer facilitators, and program specialists currently designing TK through 12th grade lessons to meet the essential state standards to improve remote learning this fall as compared to what happened during the spring shutdown. Thank you again for making the health and safety of our students and our educational professionals the highest priority during this once-in-a-lifetime crisis situation. and our educational professionals the highest priority during this once-in-a-lifetime crisis situation.
Thank you very much, Bill. Next, we have Pat Wagner, followed by Megan Anderson.
Hi, um, so I, I've had a couple of comments. I'll be quick. But um, I think my major concern is I have two daughters who are second and fourth grade. And what we found was, for one, if I'm working full-time, there is no way that I can do four hours of work with my daughters every single night. They are too young to be on a computer unsupervised. Please consider that when you're happy, when you guys were talking about what you're expecting students to do alone. But also, if my daughter is struggling with something and I'm at work, I don't get home. I get home at six. I still have to do dinner with them and then I have to do multiple hours of work with them. And when are they gonna go to bed? Ten thirty, eleven thirty at night? There needs to be an understanding that you have working parents and that we don't, you can't assume that all parents can be home, even working from home with their kids. And it sounds like that we have the flip side going on where we have other parents who are saying their kids aren't getting enough. We worked seven days a week during the spring and still they, their grades dropped across the boards. Seven days a week and I did the best I could. It sounds like there needs to be an option in some input from parents on, well, what path do you need? Do you need, I mean, are you needing more support from the district because we can't be there for them during the day? And I certainly can't get them onto synchronous, synchronous things all the time. So that was my major thing. And then I'll make, the, the last one was when we get back into the classroom, what is that gonna look like when kids can't work together in groups, the teacher can't get close to students? So how, when my kid struggles, struggles with math, how is that teacher gonna help them through the steps? Is everything going to be a lecture format? It's totally against every, like, how we're supposed to teach and help kids. So I wonder what the quality of classroom education is going to be like when we return. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Megan Anderson, followed by Emily Bassett.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of my son, who is a autistic three-year-old who is enrolled in the Autism Day Program. Like many other people who have spoken this evening, I have grave concerns about my son. You have heard tonight from many parents of special ed students and they have voiced their frustration and their fears about their child's progression. My question to you this evening is how can remote learning for special ed students, particularly in the primary grades and in the preschool program? How can you justify remote learning as an appropriate education that a federal law guarantees to special ed students? It is no question that a twenty to thirty-minute Zoom meeting is not the equivalent of four hours of in-person, socialized education that our children deserve. I am very concerned that my child's rights are being violated by the school board's decision, if it is to be their decision, that special ed is going to be remote. I urge you to reconsider that and to consider the special needs of these students. One other parent mentioned services and I cannot agree more. Those services need to be provided. Thank you.
Megan, next, we have Emily Bassett, followed by an individual identified by G. House. Emily, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, I am jumping on. I am, both have a student in the district. Um, but I am also a clerical staff member um at a high school. And this, my student goes to my high school. Um, I, I think any can, I don't think there's any question that distance learning, at least at the high school level and for the gen ed students, really has to happen. Um, the science is very clear on that. And when we did start opening up again, I, I, I think distance learning helped us get those numbers down. But when we started opening everything back up again, that's when those numbers spiked again. So I'm very much in support of distance learning. However, I do have some concerns as to what that means for me as a classified staff member. Um, I know that most of the talk always surrounds teachers. Um, and what happens with them. And I know that like with the full distance learning program and independent study, teachers with like health risks who are in high-risk groups um have been given the option and priority to move into a fully remote position, teaching kids like that. But I haven't seen anything for classified. And if the schools have to open up to offer full education or full in-person education for everyone that wants it, then I have to be there. And I'm in, I, I, cause I'm in the front office and I'm a high-risk individual. I belong to one of those groups. I have health conditions that really make me anxious about that. So I wanna know if there's any way that I can continue working from home or if there are any options for classified staff members in that regard. Um, and on top of that, I think a lot of the protocols per, uh, presented by Trent Allen might be, they sound good, but they're gonna be very, very hard to implement at the school. I just don't see how we're gonna do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Emily. Next, we have G. House, followed by A. O. Zuckerman. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Please begin when you're ready.
Members of the Board and Superintendent, I'm an essential state employee. I urge you not to approve the superintendent's instructional plans as they have been presented today until they are improved and enhanced with a focus on distance learning and increased synchronous teaching time. I applaud the Board for taking all comments from the public and being as transparent as possible about plans in the face of changing circumstances and a trying pandemic. I appreciate that the district, district has been committed to considering the needs of the students, teachers, and faculty in an attempt to balance pedagogical and safety concerns. Even as an essential employee, I agree with the full distance learning decision. I'm a parent of two young children, one heading into kindergarten this fall and the other in the second grade. I cannot stress enough how much I would like the district to immediately devote more resources into building up the distance learning curriculum it, it plans. The resources need to now be reprioritized immediately from looking at safe-in-school learning to improving distance learning. For distance learning, there must be a robust option with one point of entry for students on one platform. And there simply must be more synchronous distance learning offered than the short amount of time currently set. It looks like the Board packet draft materials set synchronous instruction at a hundred minutes a day in twenty-minute intervals. And this is not enough synchronous time for engagement with young children. I echo comments you heard from others, including the Baker family and Cheyenne and Sarah and Lydia previously. With multiple children, the proposed model really stresses the family when there's limited minutes of synchronous teaching. My children need more time to remotely bond with peers and faculty. While I am committed to helping my children learn and complete homework, I do not wanna homeschool them the majority of the day when we desire distance learning provided by the district. Please increase resources to training teachers how to provide distance learning for the year ahead. Please make this more organized and robust than what I'm seeing planned. Please increase synchronous distance learning time to keep kids engaged. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have A. O. Zuckerman, followed by Mary Owens.
Thank you. Um, it's, I wanted to start by thanking you for this opportunity to hear what's going on and be able to ask questions as a student. I'm incredibly grateful for that, for that. I also, I also wanna thank board members, board members, because I am, I this all out, especially since I've heard very few student voices at this point. I'd also like to say that as a student who values her education very much, my health and the health of those around me is much more important, especially when the CUC is unsure of lifelong health consequences at this time. Um, firstly, I'm wondering about the outlined four-by-four synchronous option because most of us have six or maybe seven classes. Is that indicating a change in the way we do classes? Um, is it a response to overcrowding at high schools, especially in terms of packed hallways and class capacity? Is that so the plan works when we are eventually able to shift to in-person learning? I'm also wondering about what additional support we're giving our teachers to understand how to use these platforms. Because while I don't fault the teachers for what we all experienced in the spring, we do need much more support in online learning because it's a very much worthwhile effort. And I personally know from working with small children via Zoom for a summer camp that it is possible to teach them. And I think that we as students deserve that effort from our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mary Owens, followed by Cassie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, this is Mary Owens. I have a son. He's thirteen years old. And he told me if we're doing long-distance learning, he wants to skip the school whole year. He said he'd rather do the summer, uh, going back to school than continuing with this. This is really bad. Uh, what happened is, um, most of the teacher didn't do Zoom meeting and when they did, um, they just say, hi, how are you? You okay? Goodbye. No instructional assistance or, um, uh, just nothing. They told, just go to Google and, and find a, uh, some kind of YouTube thing to do the learning and had absolutely no support. And like, uh, majority of the parents said that we end up staying up until eleven o'clock helping a student to do, uh, my son to do the work and finish. Um, anyway, I'm hoping when they do Zoom meeting, there's gonna be an instructional thing going rather than just saying hi, hello, and goodbye. So that's the first part. The second part is, uh, I work for the district for the Discovery Club and, uh, sorry, just. And I talked to many of the families and they're wondering if Discovery Club could be open fully and, um, get support for the long-distance learning and stuff. And I think we are capable of doing that. And then plus, a lot of parents, both parents work, they cannot stay home and do the, uh, uh, long-distance learning support. And when they come home from the work, yes, I stayed up until eleven o'clock twelve at night to help him sometimes. So I was considering, um, why can't you use the Discovery Club to do some of the, uh, long-distance learning? Uh, they can bring their own laptop and a Chromebook and we can support them at the, uh, Discovery Club in the morning. And then afternoon, we can do the, um, uh, the childcare, what we usually do. So, uh, please consider about this, okay? And then I did talk to many of the parents past month and they're requesting that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mari. Next, we have Cassie, followed by username five W D two X P. We'll start with Cassie. Please begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I really appreciate you guys doing the best you can. I have a child that got sick a lot this whole year. Um, she went to Ophu and that school's amazing. They did the best they could with distance learning. She had a great kindergarten teacher, but one thing I didn't know, because I wasn't in the classroom, was that when, you know, like, when we did Zoom meetings, the teacher picked up on her not being kinda shy about the assignment and everything. And that's one thing I want to know is like, my daughter was doing good in school because of her teacher and everything. And her teacher gave her great support. But if we, how are you guys going to see or learn the kids' tricks? You know, the things that they're shy about. Plus, are you gonna offer any free educational plans for kids that are supposed to be going into preschool? I'm not an educator. I appreciate educators. I appreciate anybody that's working right now and putting themselves out there. I'm a stay-at-home mom and I am not good with teaching and stuff. And when my daughter needs to learn something new and she hits a wall, she's done, even if we were, been doing it for an hour or so. It, it's, she's six years old and we had a great support system from the school. And I'm also concerned that I have to teach a sick, um, a little girl that's in preschool. And are you guys gonna be offering a free lesson plan with that? Because I would really appreciate that because I follow your guys' lesson plan guidelines. And I just wanna say thank you so much for everything you're doing. And I know this is not just hard on all of us, but it's also hard on you to hear the frustration and aggravation from everybody. And thank you so much. And thank you to my school. I love so much.
Thank you very much, Cassie. Next, we have Meredith Conan.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, I just wanted to start by saying, Paula, thank you for connecting with me earlier today. It was very nice that you were able to pop back and forth with me. Um, for distance learning, we had a very positive experience. I have two junior hires at Andrew Carnegie Middle School, twelve teachers to juggle, and twelve, you know, twelve different things, honors classes, regular classes. And our teachers were, my, well, my twelve that I had were fantastic. They engaged with the kids, they emailed with the kids, they did, um, support Zoom, um, classes when need be. They, they were fantastic. So they were fantastic with both of my boys. And they got back to me as well when I had a question as well. So I appreciate that. It was difficult in the beginning, but it did smooth out. So I appreciate that. And the questions I have are things like, what are you guys gonna do with helping the kids with social development? Junior high is an extremely important time. What is the plan for that? Are they doing, my next question, are we doing credit, no credit again, or are we having letter grades? Next, the teachers, what do they need from the parents to support? I'm a parent that's furloughed. I'm available to help support teachers. How can we help the people that are available? Um, as someone already mentioned, sports, what's the plan for sports for fall, for continuing? And last, I suggest that when you guys are passing out the Chromebooks, print out directions that are easy for the kids, kids and the parents to be able to follow step-by-step directions to be able to get on Google Classroom. Make them also printable. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Meredith. Next, we have, um, someone who's joined by phone, so I'm gonna read out the phone number. It's eight two five with ending in three, three, nine, four. Hi there. Is the phone number ending in three, three, nine, four with us? We can hear you, but I don't hear anybody speaking. Hello? Okay, we are going to, um, move on to Heather Warthonyan. I apologize if I've mispronounced that name.
Hi, thank you very much, uh, to everyone there tonight. I know that this is a difficult time for everybody, um, in the whole world. I just have a quick, quick couple of things. The first thing is, is I stand with a lot of the parents that have come in tonight and have asked for a choice. I think that there are many parents out there who understand and feel that their children will not thrive doing social, um, learning on, uh, devices at home. I, for one, um, am not comfortable with trying to force my children to do work and I don't feel that I am good enough to educate them at home. My children are both, uh, in elementary school and they both thrive in social arenas with their peers and their teachers. One of the other, uh, things that I wanted to discuss is, uh, the masks. I heard a lot of parents talking about children with IEPs. However, what would be the guidelines to take effect for children who are not comfortable wearing a mask in general or for their parents who are not comfortable with their children wearing masks for long periods of time? And also, um, earlier in the board meeting, there was discussion on, you know, proper sanitation and hygiene. And while I understand that proper hygiene and teaching our kids to wash their hands is important, I do believe that over sanitizing children and making them constantly wash their hands and constantly sanitize is not beneficial to their immune systems and our children need to be exposed and they need to be able to touch people and be around people and their friends. Uh, so these are just things that, as a parent, I would like to know. Um, I, I pay for my children to be able to get a public education and I don't feel that they are gonna get what they need at home. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Heather. Next up, we have Nadia, followed by Robert Hutchinson. Nadia, please begin when you're ready.
Hi.
Hi.
I have concerns about non-English students. They and their parents don't know how to use Zoom or Google Classroom, or how to submit the schoolwork online. They will have problems understanding online classes because of the language. So my question is, how we can help the English learner students and their parents with the distance learning? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nadia. Next, we have Robert Hutchinson, followed by Asia Houston. Robert, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Word President. I would like to simply address Lydia, Pat, Renee, Eric, Tracy, Brittany, and Ms. Barash, who I actually recognize the voice of.
Mr. Hutchinson?
My number is 916-903-8687. For the last three years, I've been asked to teach almost 40 students in a room that Frank admitted today has the AC capacity for 24. So I would like to volunteer for the first one at the public comment to represent the teachers, apparently. There seem to be a lot of special ed issues, but for whatever I can do, I would like to help. And I would also like to point out that there's no way that my school, Rio, is ready to return to 1,900 kids, as we mentioned today. Thank you so much. Have a great night, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have Ms. Houston, followed by Keisha Gales. Asia Houston, please begin when you're ready. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
This is actually Mr. Houston, not Mrs. Houston. Using her phone, but that's all right. First, you know, thanks for listening to us. But I mean, the fact of the matter is, it's, the distance learning is just, it's just not working. We have an eight-year-old and a four-year-old autistic kid. It is just not at all working. And I feel like all of the options you're giving us, none of them work for our family. I am a mail carrier. My wife is a nurse. We work 11 to 12 hours a day, get home at 6:30. You really expect us to make dinner, clean the house, give our kids baths, and then give them a full day of school? It just makes no sense. And so because of that, we've actually started looking into private school options. And I hate to say it, but we're gonna pull both of our kids out of San Juan District and go into private school. It's just, that's what's best for our kids. And what I want to know is, what are you guys going to do when more parents start doing that? Because as far as I know, you get paid by how many kids are enrolled in your school. So you're gonna start losing money because of this. So you guys need to figure something out. It's not working. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you. We deserve a choice.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next, we have Keisha Gales, followed by Lindsay Wolford.
Hi, greetings. First of all, thank you for this platform to be able to share our thoughts and concerns. So my first grader, in the fall, he'll be a first grader, and he's currently enrolled at Cottage Montessori. I really, my family and I, we really, you know, love the Montessori approach. And so when it comes to distance learning, my question is how that, those Montessori materials and just, you know, that, that, that style of teaching, how, it usually requires, you know, manipulative toys and, and materials. And so just wondering, you know, is it even possible? Is it even realistic to think that Montessori could possibly translate over into distance learning? And yeah, that's pretty much it. But I, and also I do appreciate the acknowledgement that, you know, things were, it was a tough transition in March and that, of course, I have all the confidence that, that our school district is gonna do better, because we, we have more time. In March, April, May, I mean, really, what could we expect? And we were just all scrambling. So anyway, I have full confidence and thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we have Lindsay Wolford, followed by Naomi Santiago.
Hi, good evening. I'm a teacher and a parent in our district, and I have a couple of questions for, on both sides. So my first question is, has there been any discussion about possibly pushing the start of the school year to maybe after Labor Day? So that teachers can go through the necessary training that is being discussed by the district and really prepare better than what we had the option to do for the spring? And then, has there any, has there been any considerations for staff as they have their own children at home? Some of them are not school age and would require childcare, and those options are limited right now. And then, as far as the high school, so on the parent component, as far as the high school goes, I know there's been research about students kind of sleeping in and needing a different start time, and there was legislation for that. But if students, I know there's gonna be an attendance component. So are students who want or need to do their learning in the afternoon due to work or not feeling well, or supporting the family at home? Because there are younger children that need help via Zoom or their learning, are they gonna be penalized for that? And then also, just looking at some more information being put out about resources for special ed, both with IEPs or Gate students, to support their, their learning and their IEPs and progressing them forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. Next, we have Naomi Santiago, followed by Lori Hansen.
Hi, I just want to say thank you for your time and thank you so much for giving us all the privilege to speak. I'm a single mother, I'm a full-time law student, and I've made accommodations in my life to be able to assist my kids with their learning. And I just want to say, for, for everything that someone has done, I appreciate it. From great teachers to great administration, if I had issues with connecting with a teacher, I went to my principal and I got responses and support right away, and I thank you for that. And as a parent and my friends and family who have known of cases where exposure has been very detrimental and long-term, causing physical symptoms that have been long-lasting, I take this very seriously and I thank you for allowing this distance learning to continue. And also, I, you know, I, for those parents who are thinking of private schooling, I've heard of cases where the school itself had to shut down because of the whole school being infected. And it was just devastating for their children. And I feel terrible and I wouldn't want any of our children to have to go through that. So I think that until there is better reassurance that COVID is under control, I think that you guys are doing the best and I appreciate that. I do want to encourage, you know, a lot more training for the teachers, because, you know, having that synchronized is so important. And it sounds like you guys are in the right path, so please continue that. And, you know, we appreciate that you're allowing us to talk back and keep working hard. And if there is anything I can do, please feel free to reach out to me. I would like to help.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next, we have Lori Hansen, followed by Le Lua. Lori, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening and thanks you for staying online. I just retired from the district, but I also have a special needs child that's going into second grade. She's in full inclusion, and one of the things that I found with the fall is I think it's more difficult and maybe they need more training on how to individualize for each student. I click on some of the lessons and they were way advanced for the level where she was at. And then I wasn't sure exactly. I had to do a lot of texting to find out what the teacher really expected from her at her level compared to the general population of the classroom. The other thing, we'd have done the extended school year, which has been a lot more individualized in smaller cohorts of peers, which has seemed to work out very well. My other concern is, I was, worked with the Head Start program and ECE. And I know through that program and then also talking to some of the grade school teachers and that there was several families that kind of just dropped off the grid and the teachers were not able to get in contact with them. And I really worry what's gonna be done to make sure that all the children are getting some type of education and aren't just falling through the cracks and not to hear from them again, type of thing, until we are back and actually attending school. You know, and some of it, you know, I think is very difficult if there's some training things also for the parents, because when you start hearing, especially if the child has multiple teachers or staff members and you start getting emails from all of these different ones and you're expected to do all of the stuff and with working, it does get very, very difficult. So I think a lot more communication needs to happen. And thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Lori. Next, we have Le Lua, followed by Ted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm voting for distance learning. My son has asthma and even though he loves to play sports, he's at risk. And he, and, and my kids, generally, they did very well with the distance learning. It also got me involved, I mean, I'm a 24-hour, five-day-a-week caregiver. And so I'm with my client. And so I, I got involved with, from a distance, with what my kids were learning, checking and making sure that they were doing their assignments, asking questions, finding out what it was that they were learning. I know it's a hard time right now, but the teachers can't do all the work. You know, as parents, we need, for this short time, we need to be able to put our efforts in, as much of a sacrifice as it may be. It's just for this, for this, for this time. My children's lives are more important to me. And I don't want them to get COVID for whatever, you know, in however way, shape, or form. I don't want them to get it, because I'll be at risk, my client would be at risk. I haven't, I don't know anybody that, that personally that might have gotten COVID, but it's real. And so I am voting for the long distance learning and for us as parents to help the teachers, help the teachers, help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President.
Dr. McKibben.
I would like to request a five-minute personal privilege break.
Okay, we are going to take a, one moment. I just lost our participant list, but I wanted to just turn, make sure there's no objections by my colleagues if we take a very brief recess. I, for one, could also use, but I really want to hear every comment, but it's becoming biologically a challenge.
Yes, that's my point.
Hearing, hearing no objection, we are going to recess for five minutes and return to public comment, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you at 8:40 on the dot. Okay, it is 8:40 and I see my colleagues. Give me one second to get back to our participant list. We will pick up where we left off. We will start with Ted, followed by Mia. And I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that right. We'll start with Ted.
Hi, this is Heather. Hi, I have a
Hi, I have a band student at Rio Americano High School, and I have another one on her way. And for both of them, besides working hard in their classes, playing music, playing jazz especially, is their whole life. And I just hope that the district seriously considers how to accommodate these students who are active in these types of programs and are, the art, for many students, music or arts, they're as critical to their wellbeing as athletics are for other students and families. So I just really hope that they, I understand music's going to be really hard, as will be athletics, but just consideration for those students as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next, we have Nia, and I'll spell that, N-J-H-I-A. I'm sorry if I mispronounced. Please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for taking public comments. I'm a single mom of teenagers. I asked the board to implement a hybrid model, perhaps two to three days a week. It is a compromise between the need to suppress COVID-19
I'm sorry, President, yes, because I can't hear. Is that just me?
I can hear, but not very well. Ma'am, can I ask you to get a little bit closer to your microphone?
Okay, no problem. Let me start. Let me first thank the board members this evening for taking public comments and for your service. I'm a single mom of two teenagers. I asked the board to implement a hybrid model, two to three days a week. It is a compromise between the need to suppress COVID-19 and students' need to learn life skills of socializing with their peers. Parents can sign waivers. Distance learning was a disaster. Was disastrous. A UC Davis doctor said, epidemiologist doctor said today on Capitol Public Radio that the virus is not driven by children. We have not heard the impact of mental health on distance learning on students. We have not heard from a counselor, a psychologist, or psychiatrist this evening. How is the district tracking the mental health of students as a result of distance learning? Mental health is as real as COVID-19. Doctors at John Muir Hospital in Walnut Creek is being more suicide than, an attempted suicide than COVID-19. Please let our kids return to school in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have John Prince, followed by Diana Douglas. John, there we go.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the board for having this discussion. And I do appreciate the fact that the district acknowledges the failure of the distance learning that happened in this past year. I do want to know a little bit more about what the schools plan to do differently this year with that failure and also with the acknowledgement of the failures that there have been. Has there been any discussions about what they're going to do with the students that failed some classes because of the failures of these teaching methods this past year? And I do want to also strongly support the option for the in-person learning for those that would like it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next, we have Diana Douglas, followed by RD.
Good evening, and thank you for taking all of our comments. I have an incoming kindergartner in the district because both myself and my spouse work. We had planned to rely heavily on Discovery Club. I would appreciate if the board could address at some point in more detail whether the opening of aftercare programs will track with the opening of school in terms of both the metrics that must be satisfied to open and also the safety precautions that will be taken upon opening of Discovery Club. Given the difficulties working families face, I urge the board to communicate openly and in a timely manner about the status of after-school care. I frankly felt dismayed and out of the loop as a new parent to San Juan as month by month went by with very little communication or information about the after-school care programs. I understand the necessity of distance learning and support the decision to be only distance learning for now. However, working parents, single parents, and low-income parents especially are facing a childcare crisis. I also echo the concerns of other parents of younger-aged children that computer-based education is really difficult. Those of us with incoming kindergarteners are trying to figure out how to explain distance education to children who have never even stepped foot in a classroom and are struggling with how we will facilitate learning for children too young to be self-guided through online lessons. Additionally, kindergarten days are already short even during normal times. And it's very concerning that even the future partial reopen might only amount to a few hours a week. I urge the board to prioritize the return to in-person education for younger students in particular. Finally, I was pleased to see mention in the earlier presentation on PPE and masks and safety equipment. Many of the decisions and protocols related to opening are complex and dynamic. It would seem the acquisition of masks, soap, and disinfectant might be easier since we all know how difficult it is for teachers to get even basic supplies normally. I would like to know what progress the district has made in acquiring supplies and what the timeframe is for doing any gap. Thank you so much for hearing our comments.
Thank you very much, Diana, for joining us. Next, we have RD, followed by Green. RD, please begin when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Hi, my name is Ryan Dignan, and I actually have a three-year-old son with autism that would be entering into a preschool program in San Juan this year. But as a result, we'll keep him back. You know, I think this is going to take a community to get through. And what I would like from the district is I want you guys to help train us as the community so that we can help enhance the learning. This will help the teachers. This will help everybody here. I don't have the tools that I need always to, you know, make sure that he has everything that he needs as far as the education piece. So I would like you guys to help teach me. So can we do that through a town hall? Can we do that through Zoom meetings? Can we, you know, what can you guys do to help us? That'll help lessen the anxiety because, again, this is going to take a community to get through. We're in a worldwide pandemic. So what can we do to help you? Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next, we have Green, followed by Melissa Hartwick.
Hi, thanks for hosting this this evening. My wife and I have been sitting here listening to this. And for a large chunk of it, our three children were listening. And I have a high schooler. We have a middle schooler here at San Juan. We also have an elementary student. And my heart goes out to a lot of these parents. And I know you guys have a tough choice. It's a horrible situation to be in. But, you know, looking at our, talking to our kids, it's Zoom overload, virtual classroom, in our opinion, isn't a choice that we want to be forced to take. If it's going to be in a classroom, I believe it needs to be set days to do this hybrid, day on, half off, everybody out on Wednesday. I don't think it allows parents that are essential and that can work and can fluctuate their schedule. That's just a logistics nightmare. And I was pretty disappointed in that, in that option. Another thing that we think is there needs to be more and better activities. Again, it goes back to Zoom overload. And I, we personally believe that we cannot kick this can down the road. One of our biggest nation's greatest asset we have, I believe, is the K through 12 education. And that's why I believe that the job and the decision that you make is extremely important, but it really boils down to giving parents, students, teachers, the tools they need, the resources, and the choice they need to make. And I really feel that you should open the forum up to students and let them hear what their experience was. And you'll find out that these Zoom classrooms are not an option. So we appreciate it. Hope you have more forums like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Melissa Hartwick, followed by Caroline Castaneda.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, first, thank you. I understand it's a long night. Thank you for hearing from all of us. And I, excuse me, I understand this is a really difficult situation. You're not going to make everyone happy, and everyone has different needs. Especially, I think, if you look at elementary school versus middle and high school, those are extremely different needs. So I won't try to touch on elementary. We're past that now. But my experience with the middle school was the success of distance learning depended on the teacher you had, which is the case in in-person learning also. But distance learning even, you know, exasperated that. My daughter had six teachers. She heard from one once a week. Five never would even return my email, nor would her principal. So I just worry if there are not specific standards more than the AB language about live in-person learning. It can't just be showing a video for 40 minutes because the students aren't getting what they're needing. And then my second thing is, is if the vote is for distance learning, when we transition, I just hope people realize that kids have been home for a long time. It can't just be light switch, you're back in class. The kids are going to be anxious about how it works, and there needs to be some time for that transition, maybe the first couple of weeks back, or just about building relationships and making sure everyone's mental health is okay and that school is enjoyable again. And then my last point is, in my job where I do adult education, we've made Zoom work through small meeting groups and different things that's not just a talking head, but that requires time. So I know the comment was made earlier that perhaps we need to delay the start date. If teachers need more time, I would support that. Thank you for their time.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Next, we have Caroline Castaneda, followed by F Boyd.
Good evening, board members and staff. I really want to appreciate all the work that you've done to get us to this point. It has been tremendous. Despite kind of some of the stumbles that we've had, we still have benefited greatly from all of your work. So I appreciate that. And I also want to say that I support distance learning for our public safety. But I do also want to ask that you consider an increase to synchronous teaching time because I do agree that, you know, children can be engaged for a longer period. And certainly, as they get older, you know, my children are all in middle school and high school. And therefore, also want to talk about having a later start time for the high schoolers as well. And also to also build in time for the social and emotional learning, especially acknowledging that it can be, it's going to look different if we're doing it in a distance learning setting. All the more important to give it its own time slot so that we can be focused on that. And also want to support appropriate supports for students with IEPs, including an independent study settings. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have F Boyd, followed by Amy Stockit.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for, first of all, thank you for taking the time to do this and answer, listen to all of our concerns. As a parent of a soon-to-be junior at Bella Vista High School and eighth grader or seventh grader at Carnegie, my first question would be, what is the plan for kids that are transitioning from elementary school and going from just having, will that be communicated? And secondly, for the high school students that are enrolling and taking AP courses, how can we guarantee or will it be, what will be the structure or, I guess, accountability, not only from the student, but from the teachers to make sure that they're receiving the curriculum needed in order to take the AP courses and pass them successfully? These kids are taking the time and making the effort to get themselves ahead for when they do go to college and just to make sure that they're receiving the curriculum that they need to pass these courses. For my son that was in elementary school, his teacher was amazing. She met with them once or twice a day. As for my high school student, it was a little disheartening that it seemed that once this pandemic hit and it was distance learning model, that it was just an automatic early summer vacation. I could probably count on my one hand how many Zoom meetings she had with her teachers, and that was probably one teacher that did it. The rest of her five teachers, it was nonexistent. So it's very concerning that. I hope that the program for distance learning is a little revamped and a little more structured so that there's accountability for the student and the teachers.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next, we have Amy Stockit, followed by Condi Montoya.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. I've been in the education field for 20 years as a teacher, a substitute, a volunteer, a coach, and more. I have five kids at the district that will attend elementary, middle, and high school this year. Based on my experiences in education and talking with several health professionals, I believe that kids should be on campus for school and on the fields and sports and other extracurricular activities. But I also believe that parents should have a choice in what they're comfortable with. Everyone has questions when it will be safe to come back, which I don't know if the, I appreciated the doctor's insight, but I don't know if it was really clear when exactly the threshold is to be safe to come back. There are risks every day, and we must weigh our options. And have we really done that? I spent most of my time for two and a half months monitoring my five kids, trying to get them to do their schoolwork. But I also know that a lot of the time, they were on things that they shouldn't. And I believe some of those things could be detrimental to them when they are not where they are supposed to be because the internet can be a scary place. I have repeatedly witnessed how quickly my child, my children lose their desire to explore outside and to learn, even given the best intentions. With each new day, the data increases and science demands to be heard. Our children do face a crisis, but it isn't just COVID. It's a crisis of anxiety, depression, disconnectedness, physical, mental, sexual, and emotional abuse born from being isolated from their peers. It's a crisis that teachers have spent years, and in many cases decades, training and preparing to combat from within the safety of our school campuses. We cannot wait for this pandemic to subside because I think it will be with us for a long time, and the risks must be weighed. And I don't think shutting things down is the best thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy, for joining us. Next, we have Condi Montoya, followed by Alyssa Broderick. Oh, sorry, that was my mistake. We'll begin with Alyssa Broderick when you're ready.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Condi Montoya.
Okay, go ahead.
I just was wondering if there have been any conversations or adjustments made for the Rapid Learner program? And then additionally, if those families that are in the Rapid Learner program elect to do independent study instead of distance learning, will they still have a spot in the Rapid Learner program when we return to onsite school?
Thank you very much, Condi. Next, we have Alyssa Broderick, followed by Anna Pascal.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, we can.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I have an incoming first grader. We did distance learning, the share, in kindergarten. And I know our teacher tried her best to accommodate each of our students' needs. What we found was our child had a very hard time staying focused. The Zoom meetings, while we had them twice a week, they were not long enough. We had to do the teaching here at home, and it created some hardships for us. We have a very busy lifestyle here. We also have a younger child who needs constant attention. So for me to work with both our younger child and our six-year-old was very taxing. We also have a split-home dynamic. And neither, or both of us as parents do not have the same educational importance for our child. And so I'm wondering, you know, did the district take into consideration those homes who, whose children maybe don't get the same education amongst both of their homes? And if they did think about those later start dates for like maybe after the Labor Day holiday so they can get the students back to campus? We have really just struggled with this transition. We're hoping that this next year will be better, but are not as excited for the distance learning. We really do think there's a lot of hardship around it. And so we're just hoping we can get back to campus as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alyssa. Next, we have Anna Pascal, followed by Jenny Long. Thank you very much, Alyssa. Next we have Anna Pascal, followed by Jenny Long.
Good evening. Thank you again for having this meeting and allowing us to voice our opinions. I'm not sure if, you know, obviously everybody's needs are different. Our experience last year with the distance learning was a complete chaos. There was literally no teaching going on and our child was extremely overwhelmed because not only did she have to self-teach herself, she also had to fulfill the requirements that were not met by her being at home and not in the classroom. So she had the classroom homework to do and then she also had the assignments that were going to normally be assigned. So it was extremely overwhelming. Long nights. I can honestly tell you that there was not one night that she went to bed before midnight because of the way the curriculum was and because of the fact that she was self-teaching herself pretty much everything. So that, that needs to be addressed. There needs to be some consistency on the end of the teachers and their teaching. There has to be some type of routine and structure. These kids are not, they're not getting the, the help they need, not just as far as the education, but as far as the mental stability as well. You know, some of these kids are very shy. They won't speak. They won't ask questions. And those kids are falling through the cracks. Also, I'd like to know when will we be receiving information in regards to all of our concerns and when would this decision be made? I would really like to have the answers to a lot of these questions that other parents are asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna. Next we have Jenny Long, followed by Karen Smith.
Hi, so I have one child in elementary school, one in middle school and one in high school. And the elementary school was, the teacher was fantastic. She did a really great job of being thorough and being reachable. The only disappointment there was the, the amount of work that was assigned. It was like three to four hours a day. And I have three kids that I'm working with in addition to a little one that's not in school yet. And so the caseload was a lot and it was really hard to keep up with that. And I'm wondering how you guys are going to handle like when teachers assign a certain amount? And if kids can't meet that amount, how that's going to be handled if it's just too much for say the family or for the child on their, on their own? Also, I found similar to a lot of people that the high school teachers just gave up on us. I felt like we couldn't reach them. We didn't have a single Zoom meeting the entire time. Not one Zoom meeting at all. We couldn't reach them over email. We couldn't get ahold of the school. It was horrible. I'm, I'm for going back to school. We want to go back to school in any kind of fashion. I, I also agree that people should be able to choose, but my soon-to-be sophomore doesn't feel like he learned anything. We spent hours on his homework. I mean, it was awful. And I hope that you guys have a better plan for holding teachers accountable. And I think that the recording, you know, having them record their lectures and us being able to go at a different time would be beneficial if we have to do distance learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next we have Karen Smith, followed by Juanita Martinez.
President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. I'm speaking on behalf of CSEA Classified Members. None of us could have foreseen the global pandemic and the resulting fallout that has affected all of our lives and the lives of the students we serve. We would like to thank the board for reaching out to CSEA regarding employee concerns in the opening of the 2021 school year. It's important right now for students, their families and staff to work collaboratively together while keeping everyone as safe as possible. We would like to thank our instructional assistants and other staff can be a great asset and provide support to our teachers, students and families in the distance learning model this school year. Thank you for your consideration for the safety of all students, families and staff in these uncertain and difficult times.
Thank you. Next we have Juanita Martinez, followed by Sabrina Bernardo.
President Viasquez, give me just one moment to get her in. She should be able to go.
Juanita, please begin when you're ready.
Great, thank you. Juanita is here and this is Adam Dondro. I appreciate the board taking the time and I appreciate all the work that the staff has put into this. Wanted to say that we're in support of the distance learning option at this point in time. When we're advising workers not to go into a boardroom together with a group of people, we shouldn't be putting our children into the same position we're advising them not to go into. We also wanted to encourage the board and the staff to consider for younger students, shields in addition to masks regardless of the health directive because younger students just simply can't keep a mask over their face for any period of time. Facing that personal experience of a six-year-old at home. And also to encourage the board and staff to think about more direction specific for teachers and perhaps including active screening. All of us parents are terrible about keeping kids home when they're sick. And based on the comments you're hearing today, it's not a question of when or if. It's just how many people are going to send their kid to school with these symptoms? And are we going to leave it up to teachers to be the one who has to subjectively decide what kind of a cough they're dealing with? I think we need a little bit more guidance around that. Again, appreciate the time and all the input.
Thank you, Juanita and Adam. Next we have Sabrina Bernardo, followed by Jason Andrews.
Hi, thank you, board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. This is my third board meeting that I've attended through Zoom and I've been listening to everything and I realize you guys are in a point where you really don't have a choice. We are going back virtual. There is no choice for that. Of course, many people are not happy. I am not happy. But virtual did not work for our family. Our teacher was amazing. We love our teacher. And she struggled just with giving all the other parents the ability to even figure out how to utilize the Google Classroom, how to turn in assignments, all of that stuff. So I'm not going to use any of more of my time, but I'm actually going to turn it over to my son. He's eight years old and he's going into fourth grade. Go ahead, Katie.
It worked, but just at the same time it didn't work because, because if you were like working on something, you would have to try and get on it. Like you couldn't just raise your hand and like lucky you could in a classroom. Like if you had like a question on like math or something, you, like I would have to ask my mom, but then she's working and then I have to wait like an hour. And then by then, it's just like, and then I've, I'm already done with all my other work. It's so, it's just hard because I have to wait like an hour just to ask a question.
So I think what he is saying is the materials to try to learn through the Zoom is frustrating. He's going in fourth grade. He's doing the best he can. We're all doing the best we can, but assuming elementary school kids can do this when parents are working, it's just, it doesn't work. And we love our teacher and I wish if anything, we could just stay with our teacher because she at least knows the kids. God forbid, these kids are going to have to learn a whole new teacher next year and vice versa. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next we have Jason Andrews, followed by Ariane.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so basically what, what, what I think is going on is the spring shutdown was an emergency and that's why it was such a cluster. So basically what's coming up in fall, we've had a little bit more time to prepare and I think it's going to be a lot better than it was in the spring. Not only that, but a lot of what I'm hearing is a lot of blaming the district for what really was a county decision. So basically we just all need to get ready, make the necessary changes and do this thing. Also, the parents are asking teachers to really be parents and I don't think that's really fair. Parents need to step up and, and actually do what parents do. And ultimately it's, they're just, it's, it's on them to do what parents are supposed to be doing and it's, they're really hurting their kids, their education for giving this pushback. And the ones that are saying that they're not, they're not teachers, remember that when it comes to voting for educational funding next time. Moving forward, we all just need to do the best we can with the situation that we've, that we're all in now. Thank you very much. Thanks for having this forum.
Thank you for joining us, Jason. Next we have Ariane, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, followed by Lanny Law. Please begin when you're ready, Ariane. You're on mute, Ariane, if you're trying to speak. There we go.
Good evening, board members. I'm a Bella Vista student entering my senior year of high school. When we first went on to distance learning education, I had positive experiences with my AP classes. But with the rest of my classes, teachers often left me to fend for myself. With this district opting as a dictatorship and forcing students into a distance learning semester will have major negative consequences. Distance learning prevents me and others from getting the proper education from my AP classes that increase my chances of getting into a higher level college. This board is sacrificing my future education of myself and others because of your misguided decisions. You are forcing parents to become teachers and creating a mental health crisis within the high schools. The actions, actions of the board is astonishing and extremely disappointing. All we want is a choice. Students who want to stay home should stay home and students who want to go to school in person should have that option. I have friends in private schools and neighboring counties who are able to attend school and participate in sports. They're still able to have rallies and dances without sacrificing the safety of their students. Our age group is not as affected by COVID-19 compared to other age groups and the Pediatric Association has recommended students to return to school. If you are not listening to the experts, then listen to the adults. If you don't listen to the parents, then listen to the students, the people you are supposed to work for. I ask for a no vote against the motion of forced distance learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next we have Lanny Law.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for, for allowing me to comment. I am, I'm kind of disheartened by listening to people blaming educators for the failure of distant learning. This was an unprecedented health emergency that shut everybody down and I think is that the school, Grand Oaks at least, did an exceptional job. I have two special needs kids that have, one has an IEP, one has a 504 and I had great support. I had flexibility, which is what I needed for help educating the kids. And I'm hoping that we can continue to have that flexibility. But I think somewhere along the line, we've forgotten that we're parents, we are the teachers. You know, and don't get me mistaken, educating the kids have been a challenge. But it is my responsibility to do that, not the teachers and especially in this situation. And that, and we have to support that. And I believe that the, that the educators are doing the best that they can and I want to thank you guys, all of you. It's been a very difficult situation and I'm really sorry for the people that are bashing you. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next we have username 5WD2XP. Please begin when you are ready. I'll repeat that one more time. It's user ID 5WD2XP.
President Viasquez, give me one moment to get them in.
Sure, we will take.
She should be able to go.
Please begin when you're ready. If you're speaking, you may be on mute at this time. We can't hear anybody speaking.
Can you hear me?
There we go, yes.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that was me. Okay, so first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to hear us out and the presentation was very informative. Really appreciate it. I know it's been a long night, probably starting to tune us out. I'd like to echo some of the previous comments. I'm an essential worker and a single mom. The distance learning for me and my second grader last year was, it was okay. It is challenging. My job is very demanding with a set schedule of when the Zoom meetings are. So I don't know if there's a way to maybe coordinate amongst the district or even in the greater region for set times for Zoom meetings. Not only do I have to work with my schedule, I also have to work with all of my coworkers or external agencies in order to try to work around those, those non-flexible schedules. I'd like to say that the online training for both the staff of the teachers as well as parents would be very beneficial to everyone. And also I would like to recommend a consideration of long-term impact. So I know it's easy to get caught up in the immediate fire and the concern of what's happening right now, but there is going to be a long-term impact to the students. And so if, if I would recommend that maybe dedicate an independent team of resources to consider what those long-term impacts are and the transition plan and to encourage that our students maintain that love of learning, which is really important and I think is easier to obtain in a classroom setting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Next we have Katie, followed by Tracy Clywer. Katie, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, thank you. I want to say that I'm disappointed to hear that some students failed classes and had to go to summer school. During a difficult time like this, we have to remember that students are learning different skills aside from just distance learning. If a student shows up 75% of the time and makes a decent effort, they should pass. These students are learning self-scheduling and showing up when they're supposed to. They're navigating online learning platforms. If a student is showing up and making an effort and failing, it needs to be understood that part of the burden falls on the teacher and the planned curriculum. There must be leniency in grades. It's impossible to know every family situation and impossible to accommodate every situation. We have to be understanding of those older students who are maybe teaching younger kids. We need to support the middle schoolers who are learning to transition to multiple teachers and we need to support the younger students who are just learning to use all of this technology. We have to respect that part of the education these kids are getting are the lessons that the schools have stressed from kindergarten, grit, determination and perseverance. I support distance learning. I'm a nurse and I see what COVID does to people and I don't trust that the schools are prepared to protect the kids and the teachers and the staff from this virus. So I do appreciate the consideration and, and moving towards distance learning again. I know that you're doing the best you can and I think it's critical that you also understand families and students are doing the best they can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie, for joining us. Next we have Tracy Clywer, followed by Rita Ubakalba.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. My daughter is a rising junior. I have had a great deal of concern that echoes what you've already heard about distance learning and how it is harming our students in meeting their scholastic requirements, but also harming their mental health. Throughout our tenure at San Juan, we have had some great teachers and principals. Unfortunately, this past semester highlighted that we've also had some teachers that didn't adapt well and were not held accountable. We had teachers that never had meetings. Many were canceled and very few met consistently. We actually had two teachers say, and I quote, "It's not in my contract to teach by Zoom." Your presentation touched on robust follow-up and accountability, making sure students are online and participating in the classes. My questions are as follows. Will there be robust accountability built into agreements and/or contracts between the district and the teachers to require their consistent participation? And two, will the teachers be required by contract to maintain online grade book to allow parents to keep appraised as to how our students are doing? We had many friends with seniors last semester who didn't know if their students were even going to graduate because of the only contract requirement was that they put in progress reports and final grades. My ask is that you not only outline how students are to be held accountable in the class, but also provide a clear escalation path if we find that our teachers are not participating during, during the minimal time you've calendared. but also provide a clear escalation path if we find that our teachers are not participating during during the minimal time you've calendared and or maintaining the green book so that our kids so that parents can keep aware of where their students are throughout the distance learning and even when we hopefully come back on campus full time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Next we have Rita, followed by Toni Parr. Rita, please begin when you're ready.
Again, President Viasca, one moment. She should be able to go.
Hello?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, talking as a student, I think distance learning is okay, not getting to socialize time with your friends. Thank you for taking all of our comments.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next we have Toni Parr, followed by Abby Pearson. Toni, please begin when you're ready. You're currently on mute.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm a student. My freshman year at Rio Americano High School. And distance learning was not successful for me, my family, and my friends. Our grades plummeted, our mental health declined, and our family issues grew immensely. My physical health declined also. And looking at my laptop all day made it really difficult for me to sleep and gave me constant headaches. Not to mention, I was constantly distracted since it's hard to focus on just one thing all day long. I wanted to leave school as well as the majority of my peers. I think that with proper precautions like masks and six foot distancing, students will benefit immensely from having live interactions and face to face lessons. Um, things that they'll learn like social skills by going to school, they'll use their whole life. We need to focus on the long term benefits. I'm also very concerned about my parents' careers as well as other families whose parents work essential jobs full time. If your children are at risk, leave them at home and use distance learning. However, children like me who are at low risk and are struggling very much with distance learning would love to return to school. It almost feels like high school, which should be some of the most important years of my life, has been snatched away from me. I want to meet new friends, gain essential life skills, and learn new subjects without staring at a screen. I know multiple students who have contemplated suicide due to frustration and loneliness during this time. Children with health afflictions are at extremely low risk to COVID-19. What I want to see from San Juan District is options for low income families and families who are full time workers as well as families with children like me who are being affected by mental health and social issues due to awful setup of distance learning. In conclusion, I think that families should be able to decide whether their children will either return to school or use the distance learning setup. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Toni, for joining us. Next we have Abby Pearson, followed by Christine Crass. Abby, please begin when you're ready.
I'd just like to start out by saying thank you so much for hearing us all out. I'm a high school student at Miraloma High School in the IB program. The distance learning from my perspective was difficult at first, and I would love to come back even if it is just hybrid learning, but only if it would be safe, and that is currently not the case. But if it's a sacrifice that I have to make to ensure that my fellow students and their family, as well as my teachers and their families are safe, then I would definitely I would do it in a heartbeat. Everyone in my family is at high risk, and I'm sure that it's like that in several families. Of course, I would love to go back to school, but I don't see it being practical. I would love to go back to school, and it's something that I love to do and I love to see my friends, but I don't I just don't see it happening. I would hope that teachers were prepped more to handle the distance learning curriculum, and that's all I would suggest on that on that point. But we need to prioritize the health of our students. If one student in one class gets the virus, then everyone in the student sixth class would need to be tested along with their teachers and their classes. And I do not want to mourn my friends or my teachers. That's not okay. I believe that it is selfish to try to go back on campus when it is truly a life for death scenario for most of us. My mother is also a special education teacher in the Sacramento City Unified School District, and she agrees that we need to be as safe as possible to ensure our students a great education and ensure their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby, for joining us. Next we have Christine Crass, followed by Aileen Lawrence.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the board and the president for running such a wonderful forum for all of us. I just want to say a couple of things, but if you hear nothing else, I really just want to acknowledge the teachers who have had a fire hose size change shoved into a pixie stick sized timeframe, no less than the equivalent of trying to build a plane while flying it. And while I understand that, especially as I've heard all of the comments since 5:30 this evening, some of the teachers in the upper grades didn't show. I do know from a family of public school teachers, friends who are public school teachers, that the effort behind the scenes to try and make sure that everyone that no one is left behind takes a toll on everyone. I also work in healthcare. I do not think that choice that a contagious disease picks and chooses. It is a team sport. It is not an individual sport to protect the community. And so while I am heavily burdened as a single parent with two children in the San Juan School District by distance learning and wanting them to thrive as well, I still believe that that is the best choice to get back to where we could be as a community as soon as possible. So I appreciate all of the things that have been said here. My heart goes out to the teachers, to the children who have spoken, to everyone that has hardships even beyond the ones I do. And I wish everyone the best with peace. Thank you.
Thank Christine for joining us. Next we have Aileen Lawrence, followed by.
Hi, so I just want to start off by saying thank you guys to the board members in the San Juan District for figuring everything out right now. And a quick thank you to the staff and the teachers at Maraki High School. It's a high school that I attended who made the switch to online learning almost as seamless as can be. Well, and I was still able to learn, which I'm very happy that I was able to do. And my question is, so I just wanted to ask as a incoming senior, considering our current situation, if this continues, what will graduation look like in the summer? Again, thank you guys so much. I hope everyone, you know, is able to get a really nice warm bubble bath soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Aileen, for joining us and for the well wishes. Next we have Allison Family, followed by Carrie Hutchings. Allison, begin when you're ready.
Yeah.
Aileen, yours. Allison Family, please begin.
All right. Thank you so much for the time. My wife and I are very much appreciative for the for the hard work and really the daunting task of everyone involved. We have four kids in K through 12. We have a high schooler, a junior high, and two in K through six. And the experience we had was across the board. We had some great instruction. We had some non existent instruction, and we had a lot of variation in between. Coupled that with I have a son with autism. And so a lot of the supports that we kind of relied on were there, but we just, you know, a lot of things were lost. And of course, this is not something that could be controlled. We know this is unprecedented. But the big concern I have, one of course, is that sports have been the saving grace for my son. You know, he's a two sports student, so I don't know what's going on with if they're going to have to choose basketball or football. If that's all going to get pushed back, but I would like, you know, clarification on that. I also had concerns about the the teaching style, right? We have the synchronous versus asynchronous. We had some instruction going on on Zoom. We had something that was just sending out the curriculum and letting us figure it out. This was very much a hardship. So I would hope that there would be consistency, both training, not only for for faculty who are teaching, but also for the for us as as parents to better help support the teaching that's happening. There was just far too much variation. I would hope that we would all agree on one platform to teach from where the experience for someone who has literally 12, 13, 14 different teachers that we have to deal with and resource teachers, it became a nightmare and honestly was unsustainable. We also just had had a new baby, six months old, so that just created more more stress. My biggest concern, of course, is that those low income and most at risk, you know, those are going to be the ones who are hardest hit. They can't afford to not work. They can't afford to go and, you know, spend the whole day teaching their kids because then they will not have to will not be able to support and put a roof over their kid's head. So this is my biggest concern is those marginalized and and most at risk groups. And what what are we going to do for them? Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you for joining us. Carrie Hutchings, followed by Ken.
Hi, good evening. Thank you again for allowing us to make comments and questions, especially because the the time is getting late. I'm sure we're all getting sleepy. But I have a middle schooler and a high schooler who had vastly different distance learning experiences in the spring. A middle schooler did not thrive in distance learning, had an increase of anxiety over not being able to see her friends face to face. While my high schooler, who's naturally resilient, he did very well. The news of distance learning only options preemptive to the vote in the Zoom meeting today was really upsetting to read on Instagram, no less. And I do understand this decision was likely difficult to make, given the vast array of opinions and needs. But as a parent and a San Juan employee as well, I do 100% support in person option for parents and families who would like to have that as an option. And I'm shocked that it was not provided to us this coming fall. To piggyback on some of the other parents, the mental health of our students is important. And risks to their mental health, to me, are not worth the distance learning only option. Face to face needs to be that option, and I encourage the board to reconsider this as they vote. We should have a choice. All kids, all kids have different needs, and I think we should have a choice. To try to throw out some of the questions before my time is up, just want to make sure that the first day of school will be the same or will it be pushed back? Will you waive all benchmark testing and standardized testing? What are you doing to ensure the kids who do not learn well in the online format are successful? How are you going to adequately support teachers who also have school aged children who are going to be home with them? How will you ensure the mental health of the students and teachers that it's not compromised during online learning? And I really want to make sure that the special ed teachers and students get a lot of support. My heart goes out to them, and I hope that the district will consider different options for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie, for joining us. Next we have Ken, followed by a user with the number that ends in three, three, nine, four. Ken, please begin when you're ready. Ken, are you there?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Sorry, I just had to disconnect my earbuds there. I'm on a bike ride. But I'd love to throw my hat into the ring about the effectiveness of distance learning. As pointed out by earlier commentators, the failures of distance learning can mostly be chalked up to the limited timeframe in which it was given to develop. Of course, anything under stress in a limited timeframe is going to flop. When we're when we're related to the distance learning that's actually been going on through the end of last school year, I actually found it really beneficial. See, a lot of people have mentioned things like mental health and physical health decreases. My grades were actually better during distance learning because I had less distractions. My my mental health was better because I didn't have to see the people that stressed me out. And my physical health even got, well, it decreased less than what it would. I mean, I had to miss practices after all, but I still got to lift weights during science class. So I consider that a benefit. I also got a lot more time to work on other projects because I 3D print face shields to assist medical personnel. And by doing that, I had a lot more free time to work on those sorts of projects and develop my other skills even further. I would say that the main advantage of this distance learning thing is the is that students have a lot more time to do what they want, and they can research things on their own. And overall, students have a much greater say in how they conduct their education, how they do it on their own time. And in general, just how they want it to be. Now, that doesn't work for every student. I'm very certain of that. However, it does work for some of us. And for those some of us, distance learning has been very beneficial. And since we've had almost three months to prepare a distance learning curriculum, I think that if we continue with online only, the the drawbacks are going to be a lot less than what we would normally expect. So I say that we continue with online only unless the risks prove to be too little.
Thank you very much, Ken, for joining us. Next we have a user with the phone number that ends in three, three, nine, four. You're currently on mute. User number three, three, nine, four, you're currently on mute, so we cannot hear you.
Is that us?
There we go. Yeah, that is apologize. It's not a when the number pops up, I can't I can't see a name, but you're good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
How can we make learning fun for students that don't want to do distance learning? Because we had problems with my nephew doing distance learning. He rather play on the PlayStation, the phone, and everything else. Because it was because it wasn't fun. And half the time, his teacher didn't even have the Zoom meetings. And it makes us frustrated because his mom goes to work and we have to do the lessons. And we have a baby that we have to take care of too, so we can't sit with him all the time. If you can get what I'm saying. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Next we have Biff Bifferton, followed by Paula Ketchel. Mr. Bifferton, please begin when you're ready.
So first, I'd like to thank the board for hearing everyone out, especially the students, because they, I feel like, are the most important people in this in this discussion because we're the ones getting the education. It's pretty obvious I'm using a pseudonym, but I'm a I'm going to my junior year at Miraloma High School. And distance learning was very, it was a very mixed bag for me because one of my teachers picked it up so quickly and was able to instruct everyone, and it worked so well. And that was wonderful. And then I had two or three teachers who just gave up and didn't do anything. So the I feel like the big problem with distance learning was that teachers weren't they didn't feel like they needed to try maybe. So if we regulated what teachers had to do, if we meant if we mandated it and made sure that they would keep on a good schedule, then I think distance learning could work better. Aside from that, though, one of my teachers, who she really did try her best, but she didn't, she couldn't see the students reacting to what she said. It was a big problem because no one understood what she was saying. And she couldn't, she couldn't gauge our reactions and change what she was saying to fix it. So many people struggled struggled in her class because of that. That's pretty much all I have to say. Just like, please help us.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next we have Paula Ketchel, followed by Sarah Hoff.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for taking everybody's comments. I do appreciate all the work that the district has been doing. I know how hard everyone's working. I am for I'm a parent and a staff member, and I'm very in support of people having a choice to go back to school. I know there are teachers who are willing and feel comfortable going. I know there are some that. I know there are some that don't. Those that don't have an option. Those that do do not have an option, nor do the parents. And as a single parent of two high schoolers who don't get along well, having them home by themselves is going to be detrimental, I fear. My other concern is with the passive screening that was talked about. I work in the office. I've worked in three elementary school offices over the past 11 years. And if I can be real here, there are many parents who send their children to school who have had a fever the night before. And you're asking them and asking frankly us to basically believe them. Not that everybody lies, but many parents will send their kids to school because they don't have a choice. They do work, it's hard, some employers don't give time off. So I would much rather see an active screening where we are screening the temperatures as the kids come in. We have plenty of staff to do that with IAs that could help and office staff. There's three of us in the office, we could all do this. Especially if we go back hybrid, there's only half the amount of students there. We could do this, and I don't think passive screening is the way to go. So I hope that is seriously considered to be changed to the active screening. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. And we are nearing the end of our public comment. We have Sarah Hoff, followed by Michael Adders, followed by Tiffany. And that will terminate our public comment. Sarah Hoff, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to say that yes, I am huge for distance learning. I don't understand why anybody wouldn't be. And as far as active screening, I am for that too. I don't trust other parents not sending their kids to school sick, especially in the middle of a pandemic. That also doesn't make any sense to me. And as far as teachers being held accountable and stuff, considering how flawed it was at the end of last year, I'm not quite sure how any kid didn't get an automatic pass for their grades last year. So I think that that should be something that's touched on. I've got a couple of kids here and, I mean, they passed, but I hear a lot of other parents saying that their kids didn't. And that's just, I don't know, that doesn't make any sense to me. I think that's really sad considering, oh, I don't know, that just doesn't make any sense. And that's it, that's all.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for joining us. Next, we have Michael Adders, followed by Tiffany. And that'll conclude our public comment. Michael, please begin when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Michael Alofa Adders. First off, I'd like to thank the board for giving all of us this chance to speak up about this topic. I think it's really important and I value this time a lot. I am an incoming junior to Merrill Loma High School. And just doing some simple math, we have 1,765 students. In Sacramento, the coronavirus death rate is 1.47%. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but just at my school, that would result in nearly 30 students or teachers dead. That's not even considering any at-risk students, teachers, or parents that could also be involved. And I am honestly pretty shocked and quite disgusted by the push to return to school because I believe it's selfish and ignorant to the people who aren't in school or aren't at risk. And I think resources need to be used for bolstering online learning rather than in-person learning. And we're conducting this meeting online. If we can't have a discussion with the district in person, why would any parent be comfortable sending their children back into an unsafe environment, especially with at-risk parents and teachers as well as students all in that mix? My best friend is immunocompromised and catching the virus, he would certainly be hospitalized. And I'm pretty certain that he would not make it catching the virus. And there are a lot of lasting effects from catching coronavirus. Deaths are not the only factor. And this is too dangerous to put our students, staff, and parents into. And I believe that no matter what solutions we can get through distance learning, those are the ones and the options we should take. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Michael, for joining us. And our final public comment will be Tiffany. Tiffany, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, hi. First, I'd like to just definitely take the time to thank you for taking all the public comments from parents and students. I have an incoming seventh grader and an incoming individual in kindergarten. My seventh grader now, she struggled tremendously with distance learning. While I understand that teachers weren't given the proper amount of time to better prepare for it, it was definitely a struggle. It's mostly a struggle because my husband and I, we both work. And although we work on different shifts, it was hard because we had to go to different platforms to get her education needs met. My, some of my concerns have to do with the youth and the students within our classes who have 504 plans and IEPs. With their IEPs and 504 plans, like, how do you guys plan to meet their needs? And, you know, I'm all for opening the schools up while taking proper precautions, such as, you know, screening before students go into the classrooms, disinfecting the classrooms. And if all possible, you know, limit the number of students and decreasing the ratio of student to teacher to increase social distancing while also maybe allowing students to, certain grade levels come on different days at different times, which would also help with, you know, decreasing individuals coming into contact. I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiffany, for joining us. And that will conclude public comment via the Zoom platform at this time. And in the interest of time, we're going to move to board member questions and discussion. So with that, as we have done over our previous Zoom meetings, I'm going to move to DIAS order. So we will begin with Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez? Okay, we will circle back, if my colleagues don't mind. We will go to Ms. Costa.
Paula Saul just came back.
There we go, all right.
I'm so sorry. I apologize.
No, technical, we're all learning it, no worries. Please begin when you're ready, Mr. Hernandez.
Very brief. As our superintendent mentioned, I feel that if this board meeting took place two weeks ago, we would have discussed the options given to our parents for their children. Though all those options were explained via video from our superintendent. So here we are tonight. In light of the information from the Sacramento County Board of Education, we are now discussing different options. The choice for our parents for the modified model is gone for the time being. In my opinion, it's clear that our parents, a majority of them anyway, want their kids in the classroom at school. I would like to point out that I understand that we must be prudent to provide safety for all. However, for all the information we read that we should not be in school yet, there is just as much information that states we should. Cephaloeducation is happening in other parts of the world, in other states, and even in our state. I understand and respect the caution that has been discussed tonight to begin school with distance learning. I understand the reasoning from our teachers to be fearful for the possibility of becoming ill. I understand the feelings from our classified staff that care for our schools. If I were a teacher, I would be scared to death as I am a type 2 diabetic. However, the reality is this, we cannot eliminate risk. We can only mitigate risk to the best of our ability. I applaud our superintendent as I felt we were ready to begin school with a modified model and prepare to adjust depending on good trends and even bad trends. I personally will only support a continuum that includes Cephalo goals. What I mean by that, as Dr. Casari mentioned, the county will review the numbers closely. Once we reach our threshold, I would hope that we as a district are ready to have our kids in classroom within a very short period of time. I feel this way as I want to stay focused to make sure that our kids get in the classroom as soon as possible and to provide our parents with choices for their children. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
I've agonized over what's the best course of action for the last three weeks now. I've read everything that I could possibly read about COVID, about COVID in the United States and in other countries, COVID at schools and other countries. I have read every parent email. I've talked to parents and grandparents and staff members on the phone. And what I know right now is there isn't a right answer. But there is an answer that says we are going to take care of our kids and our staff in the most supportive way. And I believe right now, I listened to some of the students who said, I can't imagine going back. And I thought, I can't imagine if we lost one of those students or if they took the illness home to a family member. And the family member was infected or died from being around that child. Or a staff member. Or the staff member took the illness home. So for me, when I heard Dr. Casari tonight, it just reaffirmed everything that I have read. We are, actually, the number of infections have doubled in the recent weeks. And we are just not in a position to go back yet. I support the superintendent's recommendation to create a continuum. I think one of the things I would ask is that at every board member, we have an update on both where the county is, where we are as a district, and that we continue with the training for staffs so that staffs are able to apply distance learning in the most effective way to serve our students. But I really believe that we need the continuum. That was noisy. And that we go back with distance learning and then when it is healthy for our kids and our staffs, then we take a look at the hybrid model and then on. But it is a continuum. We need to have that available to our students and our staff. And so from my perspective, that's the best way to go. I would like to say one thing because I had a long conversation with the grandmother about the social emotional. And I said, you know, I'm not so sure people understand that when we go back hybrid full days, we're still going to have to follow the guidelines of social distancing and masks and frequent hand washing. And kids aren't going to be playing with each other the way we remember. I hope that that doesn't continue for a long, long time. I hope we go back to the way it was before COVID. But when they first go back, it's not going to be school the way we remembered it. And I have fond memories of first days of school and times when kids first see their friends and can high five and talk and have lunch. But kids sitting in desks in the cafeteria separated from each other is not socially emotionally supportive children. And that's the way it has to be to keep our kids safe. So I know that was long and rambling, but it was heartfelt. And as I said, I know that parents are struggling. I know that everybody wants it to go back to being normal, but it's not normal right now. So I do support the superintendent's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thank you, President Viesca. So I'm going to modify, I had questions, but I'm going to modify these as statements and, you know, follow up with staff and families at a later time. I'm really excited that we're working to provide options when it's safe. And I just want to make it clear, there's a county order. It's not just our decision. Should we ignore that if someone dies on our watch? Number one, none of us would ever forgive ourselves. And there's a lot that would come with that. So I personally believe we're making the right decision. But beyond us, in my feeling, it's beyond us too. But I am really excited that we are working to provide a multitude of options for when we come back because we recognize not one size fits all for our families. I am really concerned about, really concerned about the quality of learning. I took some notes as people were making comments. And there were some reoccurring themes and I was tallying them up and I'm really going to think about those. You know, as was said by my colleagues and some of the callers, we were thrown into this. The education system that we live with was not built for what we got thrown into. It's just not. And it takes years to build a remote online education system, most recently evident by the Calbright Online College that's been funded for a couple of years now and only serving a couple of people, right? So I'm really thankful for everything staff, teachers, and administrators and everybody was able to do so quickly. That said, you know, I have a kid too. He's in eighth grade. We struggled very much with online learning. I work full-time too, and I'm an elected official, and I volunteer a lot. So I just want folks to know, and it's not a pity me thing. It's just I want you to hear that I live it too. And so what's happening to you is also happening to us. And it's hard. And so one thing that I hope that, and I know is happening, we just need to let people know, I think, is what supports are out there for families to support their student? What's out there for students to get through the struggle? Because it's hard and it's new. It's hard for everybody. And it's my understanding that there is some support on the website, but I don't know that everyone knows about it. So I hope that we can be, you know, push that out a little further and then work with families to identify possible gaps so we can, you know, continue to meet needs as we work through these uncharted waters. I really appreciate everyone that commented, but really appreciated hearing from the students. I know that there was a survey sent out, but we didn't really talk to students and they're the ones living it. So I hope as we continue to move through the process that we can survey the students or get their voice in some way that really makes sense. There were a lot of logistical questions tonight, very specific questions about the minutes and how that's going to play out. And they synchronized a whole lot of that. I think that, I know we can't answer all those this evening, but maybe if we can put out a statement, you know, somehow answer all those questions so folks can get those answers would be great. Because I have some of those questions too. Regarding screening, I'm wondering if we can explore a double, a dual method. I do too have concerns about only screening happening at home. But I hear Mr. Allen Lounding clear during his presentation, you know, if someone's sick, we want them to stay home. And some people will do that, you know? So I definitely think at-home screening has to happen, but I think maybe we should explore a dual screening method. So there's another test that happens on-site. I know that's tough and I don't know how that would work out, but I hope we could explore it. Really concerned about, you know, I gotta say, there's a lot of folks with kids receiving special education services and my heart really, really goes out to you. You know, I know how hard it is in my home and we don't have those challenges. And so my hope, and we know that, we have some kids where their goal is to learn how to feed themselves. That doesn't happen via Zoom. So I hope that district, along with our staff and bargaining partners, can do some planning, you know? Because we just know that it's not working. And I know everyone's trying the best they can. I don't want to minimize that. But if we could explore what we can do for the folks that really need in-person, you know, the physical therapy, the occupational therapy, the speech therapy, what we can do to make that happen. I'm almost done, bear with me. Another thing that I was thinking about, when we do have kids back on-site, concerned about behavioral issues that might arise, that will likely arise with kids that are supposed to wear a mask and they're not wearing a mask. They're supposed to be six feet and they're not going to be six feet. I mean, I have one of those kids that has, comes home with writing all over his arms from his friends. And he's just that dude. And of course, I'm going to, you know, lay down the law with him and make it very clear what those expectations are. And I think, you know, those expectations are very important. I'm not minimizing that. But I also don't want it to turn into a behavioral issue where all the kids are getting all these marks in the record because they weren't following those rules. So I think that's something we should explore. I have a concern about portables because I don't think they have sinks. And so that's something we could talk about. I'm almost done, I promise, guys, I'm sorry.
Good time.
Thank you.
That's sincere, don't rush. We have plenty of time to have this conversation.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I plan to ask questions, Zima, so take the time that you need to.
I really appreciate that. I know it's late. Just trying to be respectful over this thing. You know, I want to just be, give a moment of response to the comments about let's just open and let's have choice. Let the people that want to stay home, stay home. And the people that want to go to school, go to school. We heard for at least one of our bargaining partners that the teachers don't, aren't feeling safe to come back. And we were thanked for this model. If we don't have staff to teach your kids or take care of your kids, we can't do it. So that we can't, that choice can't be made for our staff just because you want to make that choice. And I understand that it's frustrating. I am so ready to send my son back to school. I work, you know, I do. I mean, he was really, really hard to get him to just focus and get his stuff done. And so I had to sit there with my laptop and he was doing his work and I didn't want to do that. It was really challenging. I don't want to minimize that. But we have to, we have to get through it and it's just not going to be easy. When I talk about mental health services, I'm, many people know I'm a dedicated mental health advocate. And I too have grave concerns about the mental health of not only better our kids, but our families as well. I would love to explore, not just with staffing district, but with the community. What can we do in this new normal for now to support our students' mental health? And it's not just on the school, you know, Sac County has a department of mental health. What can they do to help our students? What can we do as a community, you know, for the interaction and the social, you know, can we start doing smash tournaments on Friday night, you know, for those, right? Or can we do bingo, you know, I don't know if even kids play bingo, but you see what I'm getting at, you know, can we do? But can we do something? So at least we're try, you know, getting them together. There is a social element, making the best of a hard situation. And I would love to explore that with community if you want to work with me on that. Childcare. So I too, again, you know, I have a kid. He's, he's 13, so he could spend a little bit of time by himself. But I don't like him being home all day, all day, every day by himself. That's just not, that doesn't work for me either. This whole issue has really shined a light on the lack of a childcare system in our country. We are an education system. We are not a childcare system. And I, as a working parent, don't get me wrong, has benefited from our education system. Having, you know, giving my son somewhere to go while I have to go to work and do what I have to do. But we are not a childcare system. And I would love to work with community to build some advocacy around that. You know, there is some COVID funding that's coming from the federal government and other places, you know, what can we do? Not just for the response right now, but in recovery to really adjust, address childcare that maybe will, you know, become part of the educational system or maybe not, I don't know. But really recognize that is that something separate and aside. It's not what we have right now. And it does need to be addressed. It's a big deal. And I think I will stop with that. Thank you.
Ms. Viesca, can I follow up on a couple of points there that I just want to clarify? So regarding some of the questions that were asked, I think we will put together, what, what we don't answer, staff has been tracking those questions. We will put together an F A U to be able to respond to those. The parent support is a big piece. I'm actually tomorrow meeting with our S J A A, which is our central office folks in a Zoom. And then I'm meeting with secondary administrators and elementary administrators separately to talk really about their roles and responsibilities because their jobs have changed dramatically. And what can they do? And there's a number of categories I'm going to be speaking with them about in terms of parent support, how they're addressing issues related to attendance, safety nets around academic SEL and trauma, mitigating learning loss, and then stakeholder engagement of parents, students and staff. So that, so that by the time the school year starts, we actually have some plans at schools to address all those. And it's consistent by, by divisions. We've got some ideas, even potentially how we could use some of the one-time funding we're get, we're getting at school sites to support that, that parent support as well. I want to, I want to hit on the, the special ed issue and, and the moderate to severe. That is a tremendous concern of me and the, and our team here. And I can share with you, because I can't go into details about conversations I'm having with other bargaining groups. But that has been a conversation that I had today at 4:30 with the group. It's, it was a conversation that I had earlier in the day. It was a conversation that I had yesterday. And we're not exactly sure what that will look like. But we are trying to get as creative as we can because what I do understand is that, and, and I actually ran into one of the former chairs of our, our parent advisory committee for special ed today, as I was grabbing lunch and we talked in the parking lot for a while, that we heard tonight, and, and again, I'm going to say this, distant, distance learning was a struggle for many and it didn't work for a lot of people. And we are doing everything we can, including there will be live daily interaction and it won't be four hours. I can clarify that. There will be minimums and maximums. But that for a certain sector of our student group, it absolutely cannot meet their needs. Zima, like you said, if there is a student who's, one of his goals is just, you know, some hand-eye coordination piece or learning to socialize with one other person or feed themselves. Those are the kind of things that we really can't accomplish in distance learning. How can we meet the needs of our neediest students who have severe, severe disabilities? And, and the challenges that those parents and those families have in meeting their, the needs of their students. We want to be as much a part of that as we can. And so I, you know, I know we're down to less than 400 and we had 1,000. And so people aren't going to hear this because it's probably a lot of staff left. But we are making a public commitment. And, and again, I have had this conversation with the leaders of our teachers association about what we could possibly do. Now, there may be some restrictions on their end, but we're still going to do what we can and have those conversations to try and meet the individual needs of our students.
And me real quick. Thank you for that. That's really helpful. I appreciate it. And I agree, I'm sad that a lot of people couldn't hear that. I think they needed to hear that. But I certainly will be pointing people to the recording when it's available so they can. Thank you.
And I'm actually hopeful that by the time we have our first meeting, well, and along the way that we're able to provide updates for families. But as we get closer to the start of the year, that we will be able to communicate information out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
Am I off mute?
You are. We can hear you, sir.
Okay, good, good. I can't see the button down there. All right. A couple of things. So I'm going to start off with, with a pet peeve, okay? That I read in the newspaper and I frankly saw on some of the signs in front of schools that our schools are closed. That just simply isn't true. I mean, it won't be true when we go to the distance platform because of the, the growth of the virus and so forth. We're, that Saul, Saul was exactly right when he says we're, we're here to mitigate risk. We cannot guarantee things. But we, but one of the things I think that, that we all know is that there's not one of us on the board, or frankly, not one of us on the staff at any level that doesn't want to get back to live five-day-a-week teaching as quickly as I can, as we can. But we must be, as all of us as parents, when, when we ask our child, what is our most important thing that I do? And they respond back to keep us safe. That's what we're about first. So, so I understand that, you know, that this is a continuum. We need to see it as a set of stair steps. And some of the steps may be a bit higher and it may be a little bit wider than we had hoped, that sort of thing. But we must do that because of the circumstances that we find ourselves. I thought there was some very good ideas presented in, in the comments. And, and I spent five hours this afternoon reading written comments and so forth. I was impressed in terms of a number of the parents talked about the guidance that they needed to help with, with online learning and so forth. So I was pleased when, when Trent talked about manuals and so forth, because I do believe that parents, particularly those like myself who are a little longer in the teeth, probably need, need some help related to online learning. One of the things that I think I heard very clearly today, and we, we heard it throughout the last three months, is that both in terms of attendance and in terms of attention, we must do a better job of that. That involves training. That involves making, making sure that we're using as few platforms as possible. And the number, because if you have to deal with a number of different platforms, that's indeed very difficult. We, that if we had more time, I'd ask more questions related to the professional development that we've been doing over the last months related to getting ready for these kinds of situations. But, but the reality is we are the largest employer in, in the 75 square miles that we occupy. And therefore we have an obligation to the children, to their parents, and also to our certificated and classified and administrative staff. Again, going back to that original idea that our first obligation is keeping people safe, getting and, and as well as getting them educated. One of the things that, that we need to, we heard again today is related to being that employer. We need to find ways to try to help parents with the daycare issue as we move up on those other stair steps to hybrid kinds of learning and, and more in-person learning. Because indeed, if we don't get people back to work, the whole thing is simply not going to work. And finally, I say, we will get there. We'll get there better. We may not get there faster, unfortunately, because of the, the virus, but we will get there. And we'll do it, keeping everybody safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKibben. And thank you to my colleagues for their remarks. To the public that's still with us, to all those that did join today to offer their public comment, to the parents, to the students and to the staff as well. I have a pretty long list that's, is probably each one of these questions were also covered in, in public comment. And so I'm going to hit on a couple and not hit every single one of them. But I'm going to just start with what a lot of this presentation, you know, discussed the spectrum and continuum of learning as a whole. And I know even two weeks ago, we were just really, really hopeful that we were going to be returning back into some kind of in-person model or hybrid model, but that just didn't pan out. Under this pure distance learning format, how will we ensure kind of some of the basics that like some of our, that our meals are going to be delivered to students? There's still, I just continue to be really, really concerned for all of our children where school is the safest environment that they have, but also where they get their most regular meal. And so that was an important piece that wasn't discussed in the large volume of things that was discussed, which I appreciate. And I'm hoping staff can answer or, or offer some remarks on that.
So that is a conversation we've been having. I've been in a couple of email chains with SNAY. And we're looking at something very similar to what we did when we closed in March. We, we do have to, in situations like this, we had labor groups that were, that were kind of out there on the front line. So we're going to have to work with them through that as well. I will share with you though, that I think there's also some other things we can do. I think two members of cabinet and I were having a conversation this week about, are there opportunities for us to take meals to some communities where we have apartment complexes or housing areas where we have high volumes of students? We should be able to track that and could that help us as well? So we're going to look if there is the potential. As we have bus drivers who are still working to potentially use them for some of those things as well. Because it's still challenging at times for families to get to schools. So those are conversations that will be starting up right away. We need to get to the table with C S E A and work through those aspects because we agree. It is so important to make sure that our students are getting fed. And that aspect that normally takes place at school is, is still getting taken care of.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate that staff is strongly considering it. And I am certainly in favor of an approach. I love the apartment idea, delivery. Anything that just lets us set our eyes on more kids. I just, wearing my child welfare hat from my day job. Statewide, we've seen child welfare referrals drop in almost half. And we know that times haven't gotten easier for anybody. And we know that that's because most of our referrals came from our educators who set eyes on children every day. So some of, on the long list of things that keep me up at night really are the students that got their basic needs met from food to a safe environment at our school. And along those lines, I just, you know, I know we're all kind of moving in this together, but I really hope that we can kind of pull some dots together and maybe approach our county. I know I've, I've asked some of our county colleagues as well, but I just, you know, we have almost, if not over 4,000 homeless students in our district. How, how are we making sure that they're surviving, much less accessing distance learning? And, you know, Ken, I'll, I'll see if you have any thoughts on that or other staff. But I hope we're, we're thinking about that pretty critically.
Yeah, I think on that note, one of the, the conversations I'm going to have tomorrow, even with S J A A and then administrators as well, is we have to reimagine our jobs. Because even some of the things that they've been doing, that's not the same. And there, there may be some on this line, but I think one of the more, most difficult jobs in the district on a day-to-day basis is, is a high school vice principal. Well, their job looks so dramatically different when they don't have kids on campus every day. You know, they're not changing the schedules as much. So that's going to be the conversation tomorrow morning when we talked about some of those safety nets and other pieces. We have to reimagine what, what we are going to do even as administrators, as site administrators, as district office folks to make sure we're meeting the needs of students. They're going to see kind of some directives. And we've even talked with S J P E X leadership about getting a side letter of agreement that will clearly state our expectations for our administrators. And they're eager to have that because their world has really been turned upside down. So they want to know what are our expectations of them and how we support them and how they do their job at the site level. One of the things we heard pretty loud and clear from our parents in terms of communication was they felt like there was a, a fairly good level of communication at the district level. But we heard loud and clear that the communication at the site level was lacking. So we, what are, what are we doing? What is our plan to make sure that there is ongoing communication at the site level? I think it's going to help significantly when you know that teachers are going to have daily live interaction with their students. That's going to be tremendous. And then I think even when you look at those Wednesdays, what can we do to support students? What can our social workers? What can our counselors? How can we get all these people? I had a conversation with S J T A that there are certain members whose job, I'll give you an example, librarians. There are some jobs that we need to reimagine. What are they doing to support students? Because it looks so different if we're doing distance learning. We're going to work through all of those to really find the best ways we can to support our students. And as well, the concerns around, around supporting our parents in this as well.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. My next question just goes around kind of notification to families. And I think we have probably heard loud and clear that any decision we make will not be, you know, not make anybody happy. And what I've found in governance and particularly on tough, tough issues, usually the option that nobody's happy with is probably the best one. But what I want to make sure is just that our community is kind of clear. And I know we're constantly working with our county and our public health officials and still so thankful that Dr. Casiri was able to join us. But I, I want folks to kind of know what, what our guiding light is in terms of kind of what we're watching. And certainly that is, again, public health calls, calls by the county. But also, I just want to But also, I just want to make sure we're planning to incorporate in enough notification time for our families. Because what I heard loud and clear from individuals that I spoke to was, look, every option you have given us is crap, and we don't like it, but give us a chance to plan around it. I can at least try and schedule my life around it. So I would ask that building into this, we give, I mean, a minimum weeks notice. Now, obviously, we know how quickly how quickly events transpire and how, you know, sometimes we're living on a day to day basis. But I just think to the extent possible, the furthest, the the soonest we can notify our families of some kind of change, the better, so that they can accommodate their lives and their schedules as best as possible.
Yeah, we we hear you on that. I I think there are going to be some very unique challenges. Because this, if we're to move even from distance learning to, let's say, a hybrid model again, there are some parts to it that make it very, very complicated. I'll I'll share an example with you. We could have a teacher at a school who is the physiology teacher, and they're the only one that teaches physiology at school X. They're medically fragile. If we return to school, who's teaching physiology to those students at that school? So there are some very, very complicated staffing pieces to this that we're going to watch. We're going to have to get more information from our from our staff as well as as we get into this from our parents. Because we know some parents will not choose to send their students back. I think you heard that tonight. Until it's 100% safe, and I have no idea what's going to be the definition of 100% safe down the road. So that will help us. We're going to try and gather as much information as we can. But I do think, again, the fact that the conversations that we have been having all year long, the fact that we were able to bring 80 teachers together to develop lessons around essential standards. I'll share with you, I have a real desire, and I had a conversation with Ms. Bassinelli and Mrs. Schnep yesterday, that if we have a resource that even even others in this region could benefit from, we need to allow them to access some of that as well. I have been on calls with superintendents of very small districts that don't have the staff that we do. And their response to distance learning has been, it's not going to look any different in the fall than it did in the spring. And that breaks my heart. So how can we even support others? Because I care about kids in this entire Sacramento class or all the counties. So if we can work together to benefit students, we're going to do that. But but in terms of notifications, we're going to, we're going to try and be on as top of that. And I think that's that ongoing conversation from the school level as well. Because one thing we've learned, there are, we we would like to believe parents are really connected at the district level. But really, where they're connected is at their school level. They they, you know, they volunteer at the school level. They're they're a part of a PTA, a booster club, all of those things, because they see their actions making a difference. That's why it's going to be so important for us to be utilizing schools to communicate with their families, their parents, and their communities as this goes along.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern. Another question I had, and it was built into this to the, I think, the video that we saw. But in meetings prior, I've expressed a commitment to make sure that kind of keep being our community as healthy as possible and continuing a lot of the work around equity and and social justice. We're not things that we're reliant upon each other, that in fact, we could do both. And at some point in the video built in was a standard built into kind of our distance learning curriculum and synchronous learning curriculum around social justice. So can someone just speak to how we're continuing to fit and move the mark on that, even in a distance learning format?
So I'm going to jump into the start, and then Ms. Bassinelli, I'm going to let her take a bit of this as well. We had a, I actually had a conversation with Melissa and Kristin today about as we bring teachers back. There's three modules that we think are the the key pieces around our training. And there's kind of six modules, I think, that it spoke to. One is around that lesson design. Another is around just making sure people understand the use of the Google platform. Because if they don't understand it, then then they're really going to struggle. And then the third one that we thought was the key for us was the social justice standards. They have built the social justice standards into all of all of that, so that it's not separate. And in fact, that's one of the things Kristin said to me today as I was talking about, could we, or yesterday, could we share this with others? And she goes, well, I, we have no idea where they are on the on this journey of social justice standards. And I kind of said, well, who cares? They need it regardless of, you know, we could share as well. So Melissa, if you're there, can you add anything more to what I just shared?
Yeah, we're taking this opportunity to leverage the social justice standards in these lessons. They're identified as a part of the lesson template. So not only did our lesson designers receive training in the social justice standards, they also are identifying them and incorporating them in the lesson designs that are going to be used asynchronously as we launch into distance learning. And even we can use the same lessons if we are in a modified in person, because they would leverage themselves for the remote learning piece of that of that experience. In addition, we have been working with our labor group, with the Teachers Association, to set aside time out of, beginning of the year, we have eight 18 hours that are set aside by each school for professional development. We've earmarked some of that time for continued and deeper work into equity. And it will also involve the social justice standards, but be an expansion, and that's still in development. So there's a lot of prime opportunity for us to take this moment and integrate the work that we need to do in equity and social justice into our distance learning platform and our modified in person platform.
So let me add a little bit more to that, too. I think what what isn't emphasized enough there is we have heard historically that there should be training for all. And we have gotten agreement with the Teachers Association that this would be equity training for all, realizing that different people are at different places. So we're not going to, it's not a one size fits all. We also have spoken to CSEA and said, would you like to be a part of this training as well? So they have said, absolutely, we would like to be a part of this as well. So we are looking for at what I would say, for the first time across the board, really, the entire system receiving training on this issue of equity and social justice. And and the number of hours that we've got set aside and agreed to, I I think will be have an opportunity to make a real difference in our system.
Thank you both very much for your thorough responses. My last is my last point is a little bit more of a statement. I just, I've heard some feedback, particularly from some of our classified staffers. You know, there's a whole array of support staff that support our children and our teachers, who are often thought of as front and center. But bottom line is, there's just a significant number of people that help make those campuses run and help support our staff. And I just wanted to make sure, particularly for the staff that's actually not on campus, are our parameters flexible enough for non instructional staff so that they can actually work from home where appropriate and really actually like create more space in for people who actually need to be on a site to support our staff? Because I've just heard that sometimes there might be a lack of clarity and that sometimes the flexibility around work from home policies for those who can or for who it makes sense haven't been as clear as they need to be.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have looked at what what the work is that individuals do. We we still have very few people working out of the district office. For example, some departments more than others. Some people choose to come in. I I think it does, like, we were having a conversation a little bit about San Juan Central today. Because that's a public facing department. But at times, we haven't seen the level or the the productivity level match what we need when individuals have been at home. So that's kind of the balance there, where if work has to get done and we're able to do it in a fashion where people are at home, great. But sometimes that's that's not the case. So, you know, I think we've been working with HR. There still hasn't been a change to where everybody's come back. You know, we had a conversation in June about when should we open the district office back up? And we were thinking, maybe after the Fourth of July, we'll bring everybody back. Well, that's another example of what hasn't changed. Dr. McKibben just got 50 years younger. And so.
I think it's his technical assistance.
Sorry. But but that that is, that's something we're continuing to work with. So I I think if there are specific concerns in areas, we need to make sure that that's brought to our attention and we'll deal with each of those situations.
Great. And I just think as, I mean, and this is much more from kind of the employer perspective. And even at the state level, we've had to learn this. But I think we're finding that there's actually these kind of a little bit older notions around productivity and being at home. I mean, I know I'm working more than I've ever worked in my life, and I think a lot of people probably feel that way. But also just want to emphasize that actually, the less number of people congregating, it's also a health component, right? Like, if people can be less congregated in one space, particularly adults, we'll keep our our staff safer. So that's the part I wanted to emphasize. And then I just have a closing comment before we move to a motion. And that's just, you know, we heard loud and clear from every spectrum of our community and certainly the diverse opinions and perspectives. And to the individuals who feel disappointed that we didn't offer them choice. I think particularly given the current environment that we're in, particularly in Sacramento County, we are in a position where offering choice almost always makes a very detrimental choice for someone else. And and that's to say that, you know, the challenge of governance is typically that what's right for one student and one family is seldom what's right for 40,000 of them. And and that's why we're here to make the hard decisions. But, you know, fundamentally, when struggling with this very, very hard decisions, I mean, we don't want, I don't want to dismiss the concerns around mental health and social emotional development. Those are all very, very real concerns. But at the end of the day, providing choice that put some of our community members at risk for their lives was not a choice I was able, that I would ever feel comfortable offering. That's that's just, that's not a choice that we can offer for for anybody right now. And to to those who said, why don't you just wait a little bit and then open in in person? I think delaying puts us in a really bad spot. We are in the business of educating. And no one, no one here wants to be making this decision. We want nothing more than to go back to our kids in front of our teachers, working with our classified staff, and everybody back to the kind of community and ecosystem that we had beforehand. But that's just not where we are right now. And I feel very much like we're left holding very critical choices after, for an entire community, when, you know, the the key and the power to returning to in person actually lies within that entire community. If we continue to listen to our public health advisors and directives, you know, our entire community health is what will dictate when we get to return. And so I just want to kind of, I I hope folks know that the decisions that we make collectively every day impact the decision we will make on when we get to return to the classroom safely. Safely for children, safely for families, safely for staff, and particularly in an environment. I just think the kind of impossible decision was, how do we bring kids back, knowing full well that the kids who are likely to go back to two person working homes, working in the service industry, or working in areas where they're interacting with a bunch of people and kind of already at risk, or going home to grandma and grandpa and putting everybody at risk? It's a, it's a decision that, you know, the county already said as a whole, you know, we're not in a, we're not in a place to do that. Because really, any significant change in in congregating, which is fundamentally what school is, will put our entire healthcare system as a whole at risk. So that's why we are listening closely and cooperating closely with our public health officials. We'll continue to watch things and monitor things as they develop. We will expect and discuss updates at these meetings frequently. And I guarantee you, it's something that's at the top of our mind every day. So thank you all for joining this evening. And with that, I'm going to offer a motion. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve the implementation of a continuum of instructional options designed to meet changing community health conditions and commencing the school year in a distance learning format?
So moved.
Thank you both. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That was in, I'm sorry?
Opposed.
Okay, so it's a four to one vote? That is a motion that's been adopted four to one. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the San Juan Unified School District's Board of Education. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the board is set for August 11th. Typical start time is 6:30 PM for public session. We do anticipate that meeting will also be held online via the Zoom platform. You'll be able to find more information in the next several days online at www.sanjuan.edu/august11. Thank you again for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.